All right, good evening. Thank you all for coming out.
Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Council of the City of Long Beach on Tuesday, July 3, 2018, 7:00 PM. Local Councilmember Mendel.
Present.
Councilmember Mendel.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Present.
Vice President Diamond.
Here.
President Rama.
Here.
Let the record indicate the presence of Acting City... Excuse me. Let the record indicate the presence of Acting City Manager Michael Tagney and Corporation Council Robert Agostis in the office of his flag.
Commissioner Tagney would lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you for joining us on this holiday eve. Hope everyone has a wonderful Fourth of July, and we'll start with the Acting City Managers up there.
Okay, in honor of the Fourth of July, we will start with a safe and healthy summer. The Long Beach Department Parks and Recreation will host the fabulous Fourth of July 4K Race and Children's 1K Race on Wednesday, July 4, 2018. Registration begins at 6:30 in the morning on Laurelton Boulevard and Woodwalk. The fun run begins at 8:00 and the 4K at 8:30. This race is in memory of an airplane pulled from the local member of the Long Beach Police Department, Long Beach community, Sean Ryan, and we want to thank our sponsors, Sample 1+1, Puma Auto, and All Round Foods. Next, we have the motion to announce that the fireworks extravaganza presented by Bet Page Federal Credit Union will take place on Friday, July 6, 2018. We'll begin on Friday at 3:00 PM with a multitude of craft and food vendors lining the north side of the Woodwalk between Long Beach Boulevard and Riverside. In addition, our food concession buildings in the Shorgus Food Court will be open at 8:00 PM. The concert on the Long Beach Boulevard and the beach will begin this year's entertainment features Bon Journey. Get your spots on the Woodwalk and beach early. This is a very, very popular activity and band for us. Also be advised, our watch crowds are expected, and those attending the show should expect delays in getting there. You can watch the show from just about anywhere along the beach. Free show buses will run from both the east and west ends to Riverside Boulevard and back between the hours of 7:00 PM and 11:00 PM. Check on the link, the city's link, for more information. The July Arts and Crafts Festival on the Woodwalk has been a tradition for almost four years, and will run on Saturday and Sunday, July 7 and 8, from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. More than 200 vendors line our beautiful woodwalk along the shore of our Bowery Island to show and sell their creative works and merchandise. A number of local organizations and businesses will also join us. The food trucks at the Shorgus Food will be open, and that will play... That will be also part of the Friday night fireworks extravaganza. We also start our summer concert series beginning Thursday, July 5. Come down and check out 2018 Summer Concert Series. The popular series is free for residents to visit and showcase a variety of musical entertainment. This year's schedule includes everything from classic rock to country, and it will include iconic favorites such as Live and Kicking, Six Gun Country, tribute bands including Cold Spring Harbor, My Journey, The Ultimate Benatar, and local bands like Fog and Tabasco Road. This series will also feature many new acts, including Camelot, Tombstone Rose, and the Gold Coast Orchestra. This year, we present concerts for next week. Please note the locations. Concerts will take place on rotating beaches, Monday on Edwards Beach, Tuesday on National, Wednesday on New York, and Thursdays on Neptune. All shows begin at 8:00 PM unless otherwise noted, and you can download a printable concert schedule at thelongbeach.com/ beach app. The city is also hosting a blood drive. Summer is crunch time for New York Blood Centers, but so many people on vacation, school month session, the need for blood donations is greater. We ask you, those residents that are able to donate, to come out on July 25th. Your single contribution can save three lives. Blood donors must be at least 17 years old or 16 with written parental guardian permission, weigh at least 110 pounds, and be in good health, and have not gotten a tattoo for the last 12 months. When donating blood, eat at your regular mealtime. All donors must present identification, signature, and photo. For information concerning medical eligibility, call 1-800-688-0900. For additional information or to make an appointment, call Carolyn Sistro, 516-478-5023, or log on to www.nYYorkBloodCenter.org. And the blood donation will take place on Wednesday, July 25, at the Ice Arena, 150 West Bay Drive, from the hours of 2:30 to 8:30 PM.
All right, before we... As we start, I'd just like to make a motion to switch the two public hearings, so we will be doing the ordinance to amend the code of the City of Long Beach respective to special events. I'd like to make the amendment to make that first, and also table the item and renotice it for June 17, 2000... I'm sorry, July 17, 2018.
I'll second.
On the motion, Councilmember Mendel.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendel.
Yes.
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 Item number two, and the public hearing has been terminated until the next meeting. So on to the first public hearing, which is an ordinance authorizing financing for cost of separation payments to or for the benefit of employees of the city, stating the estimated total cost thereof is $2.5 million appropriated said amount therefore, and authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $2.5 million bonds of said city to finance said appropriation.
I'd like to make an amendment to this item as well. Being that the council voted unanimously on the previous budget for this year, the budget did allocate $1.8 million, 3,600 for this, to be borrowed for the 28 employees that are being separated, I believe it's 28. So I'd like to make an amendment to change that $2.5 million to $1.83,600.
I'll second.
On these items, Councilmember Mendel.
I'd just like to thank my fellow council members. I had expressed concern. Sorry, I just want to thank my fellow council members because I had expressed concern about the $2.5, since it far exceeded what we had allocated in the budget and approved, so I just want to thank them for agreeing to adjust the amount. So I vote yes.
Councilmember Mendel.
Yes.
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 I'd like to make another amendment to that item as well. In the resolution, the second line, to include the word "X-E-X" in section number one, to add the words "to only those individuals who have actually separated from city service", that sentence continues "to or for the benefit of X-employees of the city." That's my amendment. It's in... So in the actual resolution, it's the second line, it would read "payments to or for the benefit of X-employees of the city." And in section one, the first sentence will read "The City of Long Beach, Nassau County, New York, hearing called 'The City' is hereby authorized to finance the cost of separation payments," and this is the part of adding, "to only those individuals who have actually separated from city service to or for the benefit of X-employees," as opposed to just employees "for the city..." Of the city, I'm sorry, pursuant to chapter 258, and then the rest of the item remains exempted of the same, subject to the changes.
Got it. Thank you.
What was on your amendment, Councilmember Mendel?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay. Does any... As amended, does any of the council have any comments or questions for the city manager? Anyone from the public? Sir, please state your name and address on the record.
Roy Lester, 72 Boyd. Did you guys not pay the air conditioning? Wow, 90 degrees in here.
Yes, we... When the bond was voted down earlier in the year, we ran out of money, so we can't get it to let you know.
Bad answer. Anyway, um, it's true. There were... There were 28 people.
I'm sorry?
There were 28, because in the...
I think it was 28.
There were 26 in the agenda.
Okay, so then it's 26.
Okay, and that came out to...
There's a... There's a note. No, I understand.
Like, as I said, I thought I wasn't looking exactly at that.
Okay. And it came out to, not counting the TB... TBA or TBD, you know, not quite yet figured out who it is, came out to 1.1 million, and we're asking for 1.8 now, and that's just caution? Is that... I mean...
No, it's... It's 1.4 million in salaries, and then there's pension benefits and social security that also has to be paid out of that.
So that's not... Why isn't that listed? When you have the numbers in the agenda, why don't you list the phone numbers that have to be paid? So when the public looks at it, they see you're paying out 1.1, and now you're telling me you're paying out 1.8?
Yes, because we have to pay social security and pension benefits.
I need to show it.
So, let me ask you a question. You're saying that the pension and the social security comes out to 700,000 on a $1.1 million payout?
No, I dispute your numbers. We have 1.4, so it's about 400,000.
Well, I'm sorry, the agenda said 1.1, one of the people that you listed. And these are your numbers, you know, I'm just reading off the agenda. But let me ask you a question. Have you...
Just for clarification purposes, the attachment to the agenda says 1.34.
No, but it also... That's a TBD, that's not a person. Do you see that? The last one...
It's a police officer that's already informed us that he's retiring.
Then why don't we have a name? If he informed you, why don't you have a name, so that the public knows what's going on? You were informed already who the person is, yet you don't put it in. Is that right? I don't get it.
Attention. Nope.
Okay. But what I'm asking is, have you guys seen the backup for this? These are the same people that were paid in April, correct? Some of them? Weren't 25 of them the same people that were paid in April?
I believe so, yes.
You'd be wrong. So every...
In order to help the city make these payments, they're done in installments. Yes, that's correct. Thank you.
So do we even know how much these people, their separation is?
The council received documents on every single one of these folks, yes.
So you know the total of their separation payments, not just what's being done?
Yes, we got a whole pack of documentation on each of the people.
Okay.
We received this information on Friday, and I can just hold it up to the public. This is what we receive for each and every individual person who's receiving the payouts.
Okay, it would be nice if the public got this instead of just a partial payment of what they're getting. You know what? It's our money, and we'd love to know what it's going for. And you have all the backup documentation?
Yes, for each person.
Okay, and if we want to look at it, we're going to have to go through the foil dams? Is that right?
Yeah, I suppose. That's right.
You won't just dispose it?
We've submitted a FOIL request, and we'll respond to it, just like any other document request, Mr. Lester. No difference.
Yes, yes, when we...
That's not my experience in the school board, Mr. Lester, I can tell you that.
Well, I've been there a lot longer than you have.
You're not on it. Are you? Are you on the board? I'm giving you my experiences with the school board, Mr. Lester. You're not on the board.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
So don't tell me you're there. I'm not.
No, I'm not there. But I did spend a lot of years there.
Me too. Okay, too.
All right, so all we are asking for is, we'd like to know about these payouts. We'd like to know what the basis for them is. When you give us a list of people, and you only have the amount that they...
Sorry, sir, that's your time. Thank you.
You guys were talking. You guys were talking.
He stops the clock. Thank you, Mr. Lester.
They don't want the... They don't want the questions.
Sir. No, the time works. You can come up and speak.
You work for us.
You don't have that.
You had answered a question with the...
Please state your name and address on the record.
Dave Garmickel, 535 West Broadway.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I really find it somewhat...
Louder.
I find it amazing. I don't understand how you can possibly have just gotten this information on Friday. You presented this, I don't know how long ago, because I was here last week, I think it was two weeks ago, and the week before, you presented it.
Cooking the books.
So how is that possible? And now you're just getting information now, and yet giving it to us in drips and drat. Normally, when you're asking for something, you're making a long presentation, hey, this is a total, you know, per person or whatever, this is how we're doing it. It is owing to you guys being so spent, if there's no more money left, hey, we're going to pay installments. What is... Each installment, we don't have to go through this all the time, and it's laid out clearly. I don't understand that. How could that possibly be? All right? And, you know, so that's one thing. Secondly, who would even buy such a bond? Because it's such a ludicrous discussion on the face of it. It's absurd. So to sell it, it must have some extraordinary interest we must be paying, right?
Right.
What is that number?
No answer.
We don't know, folks. Every... When we went to bond, they bid the interest rate at the time.
Okay, you have some idea, because it's such a short and ludicrous exercise, right? So you don't even know. You don't know what you're putting us on a record. You don't have any idea, right?
Yes, it's about 2% that we were borrowing for. Then after the last fiscal crisis, the last bond we gave was at 4%.
I could... I can't comment as to who would purchase money over that, but it's my understanding that these installment payments are pursuant to the collective bargaining agreements. That's done that way every year. It's also a negotiated term, the ease for the city and also the ease for the tax application for the...
Okay, fair enough. Now, present that in a schedule, okay? Don't present it, don't put like, you know, bogus CBDs, appears to be no person is. That's really weird, and that's like the Spex's slush funds, and it just underscores the lack of thoughtfulness that you guys continue to demonstrate. Uh, so...
I disagree, sir. I mean, this is just an authorization for a bond. Technically, it could authorize $5 million, but we would only use what we needed to pay the folks that are being separated, and only separated.
Okay.
So under the advice of our comptroller, or a comptroller that is on contract with us, the comptroller that...
I don't understand how you do any of this stuff without any sort of oversight, without a comptroller, without a proper manager, or without... I would hire an outside lawyer, right?
We do, we do. We do have outside orders, and we have form, and we have bond councils, so this is written by, you know, outside council.
That's just how to raise the money. I'm saying like, you guys can't keep track of your money. You've really admitted, much to your credit, you admit, you have no idea how to run a city. No, you admitted at the last meeting. I asked you, and I said, hey, you have new friends you can call, and you have contacts, talk to other people in other cities. You did. Actually, it's demarcal proofable. If you run the tapes of the last meeting, you asked us, hey, we don't... We're out of ideas, we don't know what to do, how can we get more money? Right? You don't need more money. You're swimming in money. You're giving money to everybody you know. You have a spending problem. You need to stop spending money.
This is contractual obligation.
Yeah, but that's spending money. Entering into contracts is how one spends money. Don't fight working.
I'm not playing working. You're just incorrect. You're incorrect, sir. Our employees that work hard for the city for however many years they do, when they retire, deserve the benefits that they've negotiated, that your unions have negotiated, whether they're lease, fire, or CSA. These are all unionized employees that have a union negotiating contract. That's it.
Yeah, like, guess what? Probably, we're the best people to negotiate these contracts, and furthermore, this should not be a surprise. Why is it like, oh, no?
Because this is a surprise. We voted for this in the budget. Year after year, we voted to bond separation payments in the budget. Year after year. This year, it was voted 5-0 to the bond, 5-0 to the budget, which means every council member here approved of the $1.8 million that we were going to borrow for separation payments.
Well, shame on all of you all for that, and kudos to you for being so free in admitting that, hey, you just spent it for the guys that don't...
We're not spent it for the guys. Yes, this is our obligations. So if we don't bond for it, then it's...
Step down.
1% for every $300,000. 370,000. So every $370,000 for these payments, we would have to raise taxes 1% to pay for these contractual obligations that everyone in here has.
Yeah, I advise you to not get involved in these where we have to do this, okay?
It's too late for that. This is... Contracts are negotiated years and years and years. Mr. ... Sir, these provisions are embedded in the contract for decades. Decades.
Let me ask you something. Give me a tip, how much it should cost to run the city? What should it cost to run the city? How do you produce a budget? How do you make a budget?
We just passed a budget. Your time is up, sir. Thank you for your time. Please state your name and address. Thank you.
Monica Goodman, 55 West Broadway.
Good evening.
Good evening. I think the crux of the problem, which I really would like all of you to address this year, in the new fiscal year, is the practice of paying for blood days and due time and sick days accumulated, and all of the other accumulated days that add up to these, but absurd and impractical payouts that are unsustainable. This practice, as we can see every year, becomes more and more unsustainable. So you've got to do something about that immediately. I understand every time you say contractual obligation, but you know what? The city, you said, is in a fiscal crisis. So do something about it. This is what we elected you to do. I'm sure this is going to be very unpopular, but I don't really care. Why are we having fireworks? It's really a nice thing, but it costs money, and we're having three or four concerts a week this year, because I don't think the people realize that that costs us money, too. Do any of you know the figure of what we're going to spend on the summer concert series this year? No. No. You know what? I am now a single-family household, because my significant other passed away five years ago. If I don't know every single cost and how I'm going to pay for it, I'm in deep doo-doo, okay? But you guys don't know the cost of these very nice programs. Listen, I love the summer concert series, but if we don't have money, don't have it.
The fireworks are sponsored by the Federal Credit Union.
Does the sponsor cover all of the costs?
It covers the fireworks.
It covers the fireworks, but it won't cover the increased police presence.
When we voted on the budget, went through the budget, the council had a list of every event and what it cost and how much the summer concert series was. I don't have the figures in front of us, I don't know if anyone here does, but we went through all of that during the budget season, and we decided that that adds the flavor and the excitement to Long Beach, and we decided that that's something we wanted to pay for, which is why the budget was passed 5-0.
Oh, we have three concerts. Oh, we bought four.
I think it's three and four. Four, mostly four.
Mostly four.
Yes.
When I sat up there, it was three.
And they're partially being sponsored by PSC and G this year.
Terrific. Sponsorship is where it's at, you guys.
Yep.
Cutting costs...
We've been trying.
And cutting our expenses is what we need you to do, but certainly the most important thing is for you to find a way, and you might have to use some magic, to make these unsustainable payouts go away. And honestly, I didn't realize that a few weeks back, when we were talking about bonding, that those were only partial pay... And honestly, I didn't realize that a few weeks back, when we were talking about bonding, that those were only partial payouts. I'm shocked. So is there a way for us to get the different steps all in one document? In other words, rather than piecemeal of, well, this first payment is going to be X, and the next is Y, and the next is Z, can we just get a comprehensive number?
Well, the council has it, so you could, I guess, foil for the documents.
I thank you.
And I thank you, thank you, Miss Goodman, for your comments. We're going to take them under advisement. And as you pointed out when you sat up here, you had to wrestle with the same issues, payout separation pay, union contracts. It's something that preceded us, probably preceded you while you were a councilperson.
Yes, I understand. But yes, it's an ongoing challenge, but I think we're at the crisis point of it needs to be taken care of now.
Really, one of the concerns is these contracts predate everyone up here, most likely. Some may have even predated you. Clearly, these people who are retiring gave service to the city for decades, and that's why some of the payments are quite large. So it's something going forward we have our eye on, but it's something we have to deal with in the present now in front of that.
But, Mr. Mandell, the separation payments, some of those folks, I'm going back to the first round, some of those folks haven't even separated.
And you make the distinction. That's why these are solely separation, naturally, and that's why Vice President Diamond added the amendment that it's solely used for separation.
Thank God.
So, like I said, I towards the future, but we have to take care of the present right now. So everything's being taken under advisement.
Okay, but when a company, when a company, a business, is in desperate straits, what do you think the first thing they're going to do is? Say, you know what? Thank you all for your service. It's been terrific, appreciated, but we're at a point now where we cannot continue to make these excessive payouts. You can no longer bank your time, and that's the way it goes.
Use it or lose it.
That does have to be negotiated. Legislator Ford. Please state your name and address for the record, legislator Ford. Thank you.
Do these 436 Ohio Avenue? I do want to thank you, though, in the issue of this bond, you know, for reducing the amount that you plan on borrowing to $1.8 million, and I'm glad that we're finally going to make it so that people do separate from the payroll. And I just want to go back to the first bond, the original list that you had, the exempt employees on, some of them that didn't separate. Have all those claims been settled? They've all been paid? Okay, all right. So then, moving forward then, and I'm going to follow up on, I guess, maybe the line of questioning that Roy Lust had. So for the people that are on this list right now, where it's, I guess, according to the resolution, it would be about $1.3, $1.1 million plus $200,000 was built in for possible police department retirees. I guess, you know what, I would like, as nice as it was that you went to 1.8, I'm just curious as to the 1.8. I understand that you were saying that you needed $500,000 for pension, I guess pension payments. But these payments are based on receiving claims reports that the employees would file when they separate from the payroll, and this would be the resolution that pays them for this. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, because on the receiving claims report, there actually is no line for pension. All it is, it would be basically be the unused vacation hours, the sick leave, the terminal, I guess, pay lag if they, you know, they lag their pay, and then also like any comp days or personal hours. There actually is no line here for pension. So I would think that the pension actually, or any other payments, would be part of the salary, the pension that they would receive on an ongoing basis, which would probably be monthly till, you know, for years to come after that. So my, I guess my request would be that, considering that we are in such tight financial straits, and we really have to be careful and do our due diligence, and I'm not arguing about the payments, because I do believe that it was a contractual payout. The employees are entitled to what they were given via their contract, and I do respect that. But, you know, considering that we don't have money to pay for air conditioning, and, you know, we are paying for concerts, I guess, whatever you want to call it, I would ask that maybe we take a look at this and say that maybe it should have just been 1.3s. So that we know, because we have, in this case, we have some documentation backing that up. By adding 500,000 more leaves it to be questionable as to, do we really need it? And then if you have more people that are retiring and that you need to do separation payments, you could come back and vote on it. You know, it's like, seems to be a rather simple process here.
No, I think you're under a little bit of a misconception. Any money's earned, the city is obligated to pay.
Correct.
Pension contributions in the area of between 25 and 29%.
Right.
That's the state pension. That's an obligation as social security is. We don't have the luxury of saying, well, we're not paying.
Right.
And it doesn't amount to separate thing.
I'm not.
This is just the money that the individuals are getting, but they also, the city's obligated, just like why we need to pay taxes, has to pay in the separate pension payment and the social security, their portion.
Their social security, that's, but why isn't it not written into the resolution?
Because this is the money that's given to the individuals. That money is given to the pension system and give to social security. It's not going to be given to the pension. We could in the future put a line in there.
Right.
Social security, pension, and then it would make, it would be clearer.
Because.
It's never been done that way, and it may be a way to do it in the future.
All right, so then because what's happening is, like, you're voting on a bond, it says separation payments. You have something that's signed by the city manager to the comptroller and so forth, which basically makes it a legal document, which clearly indicates a certain amount of money. But you're telling me that this really isn't the actual money that we're giving them. We're giving them something else in addition to this.
They're not getting any of the other kind of money. The state is getting the social security money. They're getting exactly what that paper says.
Okay, so then the, all right, so then I think that I have to go back to what Roy Lust says, that we need to have better accounting, and then we need to be able to save the documentation supporting the pension and the social security.
Maybe what we could do is ask bond council, because bond council actually writes up these bonds resolutions first. We could ask bond council to add a line that says what the pension and what the social security payment is going to be, rather than just what the payments to the individuals are going to be.
Yeah.
Is that how the county does it? Does the county do it separate?
Yeah, that we, we do is we'll make the payments to the people and stuff like that.
But when you vote on it in the resolution, because I'm sure there's the county borrow for separation payments too.
They, we borrow. Sometimes we do, sometimes we don't. A lot of times, we're trying to take it out of the terminal fund, because the land doesn't want us to do that.
Right, so the county borrows too. So in your resolutions, do you know if it separates the payments and the pension payments?
No, I think it's just that, basically, the payments, you know, whatever. Let's say the same thing with the, you know, with, so if we had an officer that was leaving at $350,000, $3,000, that was what the resolution would show. But we do it in, more like in bulk, and then, like you do it, the bulk, and then we do the breakouts and the supportive documentation.
So you do the same way?
Yeah, but we, but we actually, I guess, we haven't been called into question as to our payments.
I'm sorry?
We haven't, we haven't had problems, you know, where we've given to exempt people, you know, too much money in the past and.
Good evening.
Name and address, sir?
James Kirkland, Long Beach, New York. After listening to what Denise was just saying, it seems like there's a lot of confusion amongst a lot of people in terms of how things are being handled. So just out of curiosity, since we don't have a comptroller, who does all the calculations for the separation payments?
We have an acting comptroller, and she's assisting along with our payroll supervisor and our consultant.
So you have multiple people that are, and so I assume then they check each other's information?
Yeah, I would, yes.
And the payout forms that require the person separating to certify as to their time and amounts by saying a payout form? Are you, are those checked to make sure that they're correct?
It's all coming from the comptroller's office, and that's my understanding, yes.
So.
Yeah, and then receives the bond council for that.
Okay, so you have that.
That's accepted in the police department. Police Department Lieutenant Dodge prepares all the separation payments and verifies that the time is correct.
And is there any independent person that verifies all these calculations and payouts?
Boarding the bond council would be independent, yeah.
So the independent auditors will through all of this as well?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Can these agents have their own fiduciary responsibility?
Correct.
And not a one-year decision?
Correct.
Thank you. Ma'am. Please state your name and address for the record.
Kathy Aliree, 350 East Market Street. I want to go a little bit backwards. Presently, we're spending $4 million a year on bond interest, okay? We're missing $7 million in FEMA funds, so we raised the taxes 8.3 million, okay? We have a contingency fund that had $9 million in it and now has $6 million in it. I don't agree with the idea of bonding for 1.8 million or a dollar, okay? I think we should stop borrowing money. I had no knowledge that $3 million had to take it out of the contingency fund, but if that's going to happen, I'd like to see that in Long Beach Herald. And I would think that FEMA is going to pay us the $7 million they owe us. I'm old enough to know our taxes aren't going to go down after that happens, but we could use some of that $7 million to make these contractual payments. I agree that they need to be made. I'm from a union family. I'm not going to harden you whether or not they're legitimate, but I'm not sure why there's this knee-jerk reaction year after year to bond for these payments. We have other resources. We have $7 million coming to us from FEMA, and we have $6 million sitting in a contingency fund. And I think it would be more financially healthy to take this money from one of those two places and as a last resort, bond for it. And, you know, $4 million in interest is staggering for any city, and we need to stop the bleeding. This is just a continuation of paying more and more interest, and 4% is high in these days. You know, if you were paying like 1.5%, that would be one thing, but if you're paying 3% and 4% on this amount of money, that's a drain on the city. And I'll just push one more time. You know, I brought a parking meter and meters in 2011. They were shut down. I rigged a place that it would bring in like hundreds of thousands of dollars to the city. I don't think we should pussyfoot around with the trial project, you know, just in the one business area. I think we should just jump right into it and put them in all three business areas. There's not a town around here that doesn't have meter parking. I can't think of any.
I think we are going to put it out for RFP soon and see what kind of suggestions we get. There are lots of companies that do parking meters.
Yeah.
So there's different models that we can take, and we're going to take a look at those models for sure. As far as the bonding for separation payments, I think everyone, I think I can probably speak for everyone that we would love to be in a position where we didn't have to borrow to pay these separation payments, but unfortunately, we're not in a position at this time.
How could you not be in a position? You have $7 million coming to you, and you have $6 million.
It's all applicable.
Yes, a lot of that money is just going to come to the city and go right back out to vendors. It's not, it's relevant to bonds that we passed in prior years. We have bond anticipation notes, tax anticipation notes, and revenue anticipation notes that we floated over the years to have the money to do the boardwalk, and when that money comes in, we, as in fact, just last month, we approved $4 million because we didn't get paid the $4 million we were expecting. So as soon as we get paid that, we will be paying off that $4 million debt and reducing our debt and our interest payments. Going back to your parking meters, we do have a consultant that's on board right now. We are looking at all three of the sections in addition to all of our city-owned municipal lots, the recreation lot. We're looking, we're evaluating the time limits, the different systems, park master systems that would require the person to go to the corner so that when they, as they put in their meter, they would go to a crosswalk, they'd be at a crosswalk. We're also looking at a system where you can just put in your license plate, and that would be pre-registered. This way, we wouldn't have to paint lines and we'd keep our cost down, so we are well into the process.
Okay, good. Can I just ask you a question? Are you saying that we didn't spend the $7 million that FEMA owes us, or we didn't?
We didn't.
Okay, so why would we need to take the FEMA funds to pay vendors?
Not vendors, I meant to say bond.
Oh, other.
Letters, letters.
Okay.
And also, if we did have the availability of money coming in, which, when they drop one, we will, the timeframe for these payouts, my understanding is imminent. So let's say we did have $7 million coming in from another source. These have to be paid first, and to wait on those monies wouldn't be fair, and it would actually be in reach of their contracts, to wait at all of their payments.
Well, why isn't the $6 million of the contingency fund available right now?
My understanding from our comptroller, we have to maintain a certain amount in that contingency fund to allow us to do the deficit financing that started back in 2011. We have to maintain a surplus amount in order for the state to allow us to continue to finance that prior deficit.
Okay, I'd like to know what that amount is, because I know a little bit of accounting, and I don't think it's that high. So I'd like that to be made public.
Thank you, Ms. Aliree. Legislative Becker?
Yes, how are you?
Good evening. Welcome to Long Beach.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Steve Hollick, my name is Green Becker.
Name and address.
The council, Grand Beck, 42th Street in Brooklyn.
I can't hear you.
This is my first time here, and I hope it's not my last. And I love this. It's such a beautiful view of the city. And just for the record, I am a candidate for the New York State Senate, and I had the honor of serving in the county legislature for 20 years. Many of those years with legislator Denise Ford, who's been a great voice on the Nesta County Legislature. Just quickly, you should try to fix the air conditioning. I believe it would be a threat to, health threat to seniors who may want to come and enjoy your meetings and be able to participate in this. And also, I happen to use the men's room, and I would, I don't know if you've looked at it, but it's certainly not representative of this beautiful city. I look into that. A few bucks, you can fix both. So, nice to meet you all.
So the air conditioning, we're told, is going to be fixed on Thursday morning.
Okay, good.
Maybe over the next couple of days. And the second floor bathroom, I think, is under construction right now, and the third floor was just done, and we're working our way through all the bathrooms and making them maybe compliant as we go.
Great to hear. Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service. Have a good day.
Name and address for the record.
Norrie Egan, I'm Star Amo. You do it all the time. I don't know if you might even address Long Beach. So just to clarify, if you can, please, this new bond that's going out, this has been verified with the same bond council that verified the bond in April?
Same bond council.
Same bond council, and so this one is accurate the way the past one was accurate?
I'm not going to get into a rhetorical battle, but it's the same bond council to answer your question.
But why would we continue to use the same bond council if there's issues with the bond from two months ago?
We're not here to talk about any issues that happened in the past. It's not related to the item, so you can.
Okay, all right, I feel like you guys. And, Mr. Mandell, just to bring something you said, you said something to the fact of, to keep the eye on the ball for the future in reference to Mr. Diamond's amendment, which I appreciate that they should separate. You were here last year for the budget. You didn't have your eye on the ball for the future, which is this year. Is the future just starts now?
No, and as I'm sure, I'm enough, Ms. Goodman is still here. Everything changes as things go on. A lot of us were here. We were all here during this budget when we voted for 1.8 million for this bond. In the prior years, we've changed things as we've gone along. We've modified things as things have to be tweaked. You just saw that tonight, with Councilwoman Diamond added an amendment to make sure that it's now explicitly stated in this resolution. It only goes towards separation payment.
But why wouldn't that not be stated last year or the previous year? And I understand and appreciate Ms. Goodman was here, but I wasn't paying attention, or maybe I wasn't living here at the time. But since I've been paying attention, you've been sitting here, Mr. Amo, Ms. Moore, and Ms. Diamond for part of it. I just, I laughed at your comment, like you're just the.
Do I have a notice mark to you, please?
Thank you.
Come up next, Ms. Blanchett. Come up next, Ms. Blanchett. Yeah, come on up, Mr. Gussel. Name and address.
Yeah, I could even serve as a Long Beach. By way of explanation, how the procedure done today, my face, a bad news for you guys. I'm going to live. Couple of quick questions.
Shouldn't I be previewing?
Bond council, make a reference to bond council. Is that in Harris Beach?
I believe so.
Yes. The same term, Representative Umi and Scott in their fight to prevent other Democrats from being on the ballot this past summer?
Again, it's a rhetorical point, Mr. Gussel.
What's your next one? Now, I'm not going to waste my time with Umi or Scott or Anthony, but I'm going to ask John and Anissa to ask for proof that any portion of the proceeds of this bond that's being authorized here today is going to the pension system. Every employee here, if they're separated, they're already the product of the pension system. They're receiving pensions. If they had taken their money in lump sums, they would not have made any contribution to the pension system. So I do not see how taking their payments over time in biweekly installments as an accommodation to the city can create a pension obligation for the city. So I'm going to ask the two of you to ask for some proof from somebody that any portion of this money is going to the pension system. I'm telling you, it's not, and I'm telling you that that's crock. Now, the benefits here are all reflect biweekly payments that are going to be made going out over the next 12 months of this current fiscal year. So they're not lump sums. We don't need to make this expand this bond now. There's a long fiscal year. We just started a fiscal year, and corporates are overflowing. There is no reason why these monies need to be borrowed now. I think that we should back off on this. I think we should wait until we see how the city's fiscal year shakes out and we have a clearer picture of how things are going to be. It's not like anybody who's entitled to a payment on this list isn't going to get their payment next payday, or the next payday, or the next payday. These aren't lump sums. And while we talk about them as contractual obligations, and as far as I can see from this list in front of me, they are all contractual obligations. But here's the problem with contractual obligations. They're not sent down from the finger of God. They're not the 11th commandment. They're negotiated. You haven't sat with the firefighters, you even haven't had a contract since July 1st of 2010. I believe the PBA doesn't have a contract. I know the COA doesn't have a contract. Your crack labor guy, Jim Lakeruba, who you brought back for $130,000 a year on the QT, he negotiated the last two contracts with the CSEA. Were there any concessions made on the forms of accrued time you could get paid out on the end of your contract in the course of Mr. Lakeruba's crack negotiations on the city's behalf with the CSEA for the last two agreements that the city has ended into with them? No, and I'll tell you why. Because as an extent, Mr. Lakeruba and Mr. Schneierman before him both received the benefits of the CSEA contract that they negotiated. So there was no incentive for them to negotiate down what would ultimately cost them in their own pockets. So you guys really need to stop blaming contractual obligations and get serious about working.
Sure, I'll just answer one of those questions. The reason why we're doing this now at this point in the year is because we have been advised by bond council that the best practice pursuant to the local finance law is to actually authorize before you make a single separation payment. It's part of the revamping of this process. Just answer that question. Thank you. And so with respect to your other questions, obviously, the CSEA in terms of, I don't believe any of the accruals were affected in the last round of the contract negotiations. It is interesting that you're focusing just on the CSEA though, Mr. Gussel. Well, no, actually, Mr. Gussel, there's something called the tribe of them to the tail line. Excuse me, Mr. Gussel, Mr. Gussel.
Please let, please let me answer.
Excuse me, Mr. Gussel. You had your three minutes. Now I'm trying to respond to questions.
Ms. Blanchett, Ms. Blanchett, please, you're next. Please state your name and address for the record.
And you need to stop asking me for my address. It's really creepy. Allison Blanchett. So if, one of the questions I had was, you know, who's looking at it? Speaking of who's scrutinizing these numbers, but I believe he might have, I think he answered, you guys answered that. Harris Beach is our bond council, so?
Yes.
It is, okay. And you're trusting then that it's correct, like it was correct last time?
Auditors as well. Auditors as well.
Who are the auditors?
ABC. ABC. A is an apple, B is a victor, C is a zebra.
Oh, it's like an outside. I don't really have questions. I just have kind of some comments related to this because I'm getting serious deja vu of, you know, back, I think it was 2011, when the city borrowed 4.5 million to cover payout costs.
It's been going down steadily.
It's been going down steadily, which is great. And I remember that because I was outraged. And I remember some of the new city council people and some of the people were on. Scott, Fran, I see Fran's here. We were all very outraged by all these payouts. In fact, Fagan, my former councilman, Michael Fagan and Len Torres, had actually filed a report. I don't know if some of these new people here know this, but filed an injunction in Supreme Court to try to block one of the payouts from Sofield Senior, who's getting a half a million dollar golden parachute. That's bullshit. I like that. So.
Please don't curse.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry about that. I didn't know you could pick that up. So, you know, and we were also outraged, right? So with the payouts, these big payouts that are happening now, especially that first round of them, where's that outrage of those?
Actually, if I could address that a little bit here, I was actually one of the council members who
Yeah, I remember that.
was a plaintiff in that suit to try to stop the payouts. And that's when the city found out the hard way. It's a contractual obligation. The city lost. We had to make that payout. And in all fairness, it was a contractual obligation. Acting Commissioner Sofield at the time was entitled to the money. The court's held the same way, and we had to make payouts. When Ms. Egan brought up if, you know, why we're doing now what we should have done then, that was also a lesson. I'm sure the prior council that sat here before us, maybe they also tried to stop that type of payout, but they were also constrained by a contract, and the contract is the contract. And we found out the hard way, and that's why we sit here tonight having to make similar payouts, albeit for a decreasing amount each year.
Right, right. Because that 4.5 million, they weren't even, they had. People weren't even going to get paid before Christmas. That was horrible. But I just don't understand why this kind of thing happens 2011 to 2012. And it's still happening. Yes, it's a less amount, but there's a system, it's, there's a broken system that needs to be fixed. And this isn't just about, you know, being mad at Jack Schneierman. This is being mad at a history of this happening. And why, why, how do we stop this? You know, this needs to, this is just ridiculous that it keeps going on. And I'd like to just read a quote.
Just to answer that one question. We're going to see relief, not for another 10 years. The first contract where we were able to negotiate a cap on the payouts, those employees are relatively good. So you're not going to see their payouts until they have at least, at least a bottom, they have five bottom in 20 years, and in CSEA until many years after that. So some remediation has been put into place, but until those employees max out, you're not going to see the benefit.
Okay, and then I have all passes to you after, just a printout from the Long Beach Herald, Anthony Riquelado wrote an article in May 2012 about, you know, Jack Schneierman was just brought on board. And this is in regards to the city was auditing payouts then. Schneierman said that the city would conduct the audit internally or with the help of an independent auditor, and that the accrued time needs greater scrutiny. Quote, "We have no reason to believe that anyone has done anything wrong. We're doing the audit in order to do our due diligence and to make sure everything is in line. Before you let 575,000 go out the door, you have to take a hard look at the numbers and make sure they're accurate." That is what Jack Schneierman said. And that's why we all rallied behind him, and we all believed in him, you know, when he first took office. This is the Jack that we bought. Yes, and I'm touching my statement. So that is the Jack that we bought, right? So what happened in five years that those initial numbers were not held under such scrutiny? He actually did the opposite of what he said. He did what the people he swore against he would not be like, the previous administration. I just want to throw that at you, okay? And here, if anyone's never.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Blanchett. Please state your name and address for the record.
Nina Fiori, Long Beach, New York. I just have one quick question. Mr., I guess you said upon recommendation that we should be bonding first before we make separation payments?
Authorizing.
Authorizing separation payments. So is what we did the last meeting for separation payments illegal because we paid everybody out in 2017 and then didn't bond the money till 2018?
I'm not in a position to answer that question, only by counsel. I don't provide legal advice here, and I don't even write these resolutions, frankly. So I'm not in a position to answer.
It would lead us all to believe that the same bond council must have given us one decision last time, and now we're doing things. I'm not going to not be going forward correctly, but I am more concerned about what we might have done legally.
The way it was explained to me was this is the best practice under the local finance law. That's how it is.
And I would question why they didn't give us best practice in 2017 and now they're giving it to us in 2018. It wasn't an issue then. That's all, I just need to clarify.
Thank you, Ms. Fiori. In the back. Mr. Ashby, you come next.
Sure.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Rosina Stone, Long Beach, New York. I'm a very big believer in unions. I was a teacher for 37 years in a town that was very political. At one point, our town was in this situation that we were bleeding money. Teachers were allowed 180 days of sick pay at the end of, or terminating, it was in the contract, terminating for their payout, okay? They came to us in the first or second year of our contract and said, "We can't do it. We're bleeding. The people in the town can't take it anymore. We're going to have to renegotiate these contracts." We sat down, we did. We did it in steps. First, we went from 180 to 120. From 120 in the first three years, we went down to 90. By the time I retired, I got 60. But I got 60, that I helped out that community, okay? This is what I want to see for Long Beach. We're bleeding here. We're, I retired here. I retired here because I love this city. I love the beach. But I can't afford this. I didn't do this to my community that I was living in, that I worked in for 37 years. We work together. So what I don't understand here is why we can't renegotiate these contracts in a timely manner.
Yes, exactly.
There's no timeframe. I don't see a timeframe here. And this disturbs me greatly that I don't see you guys working for a timeframe. You're not coming to all these people here and saying, "You know what? The cops have, firemen have, five-year contract. Five years, we're going to go down to this. Maybe somewhere down the line, it's going to be use them or lose them. I don't know what you guys have to do, but you've got to do something." We're hurting. We're hurting, all of them. We're all hurting. So please, do something for us. That's all we're asking.
That's what you're up there for.
We voted for you for this. We want you to do this. So please, do the right thing. Thank you.
Ma'am, thank you very much for those questions. And I think they're very salient points that you made, all of them. With respect to the CSEA, you know, we are constrained to a certain extent by the tribe of amendment to the tail line. And what that basically means, what that law, the principle stands for is that a contract, expired contract continues in effect until a new contract is ratified, even after it expires. So it tends to detract from the municipality's bargaining leverage. With police and fire unions, it's different. They both have the ability to declare an impasse negotiations and receive something called interest arbitration. For all intents and purposes, that is the only real opportunity the city ever gets to make the changes like the ones you're espousing today. Just for your own indication, we are proceeding to interest arbitration with the PBA this year, late summer, early fall. So I hope that, you know, as that process continues, that they'll come back and support the city's efforts in that regard to make fundamental changes like the ones you've described. We also have, we may wind up in interest arbitration with COA. And if the firefighters association decides to declare an impasse after seven-year expiration of their contract, we may end up in interest arbitration with them as well. In the meantime, we are still saddled with those agreements as the prior administration was, and the prior administration, and it just goes back to back. But we are moving forward with an interest arbitration with the PBA this year.
So just to be clear, it's been mentioned that the fire department doesn't have a contract. They would have to declare the impasse for us to go to interest arbitration for the added impasse?
For an established union, yes, they have to declare the impasse.
We can't?
No.
Okay. Mr. Ashby, you're next. Please state your name and address for the record.
Sure. Good evening, John Ashby, 38th Street, Long Beach. Just some questions and observations. First, is the New York State Controller aware of the new bond that we're seeking authorization for? I seem to recall that the deficit financing requirements have had to give approval if they don't notice.
I don't know.
The Controller, have the answer from Controller here?
She's not here.
I'm sorry. I don't have the answer, have to ask the Controller's office.
The question for those who didn't hear, I believe that the New York State Controller is required to be put on notice of and possibly approve any new bonding by the city. And I've asked whether that was correct and whether it's been achieved, and people up in the day has denied now. Can I ask a question? Has there been any analysis of the city's bonding capacity? You have bond advisors, not just bond lawyers, but you have other bond advisors that go out and deal with the underwriters. Has anyone advised you, and I hope you're looking at this, about what they believe the bonding capacity is of this city?
Yeah, I remember when, when was Sherry James, the acting controller, Controller, I remember her discussing our constitutional limit and how we were nowhere near it. I don't remember the precise numbers, Mr. Ashby. I believe she was the last person to discuss it in a known meeting, though.
Well, I'm not asking what your constitutional limit is, I'm just what the bonding capacity is, right?
It's the same, we're talking about the same thing.
All right, in 2011, we had $50 million of long-term bond debt. We now have $115 million of long-term bond debt. And at some point, we won't be able to make those payments, which are becoming a huge portion of our budget every year. And if you haven't done it, I recommend that you speak to different bond advisors or fiscal experts to figure out what is the flexion point when the city can't borrow anymore legally or practically? Because otherwise, we're just hiding the ball on the residents. And maybe we ought to just tell them there's going to be a 50% tax raise, but we're going to stop with the bonding. You're going to have to pay that piper sooner or later.
Right.
Is there any plan, other than bonding and parking meters, to actually figure out a way to generate revenue streams to keep paying these separation payouts?
Cut the salaries. Yeah, more times. Cut the salaries.
I would, following up some of the comments earlier, I think it was Ms. O'Leary and others, I would ask, even if you go forward and authorize this bond, I understand that means that you're not actually issuing it. And you should figure out, if you can find money anywhere else, stretch every dollar you can and not make any payments to the extent that you can find cash to do it, so that we don't get burdened further with debt and then we end up not making tough decisions. That's not good for you, it's not good for us. And I would also ask, without there being 100% certainty as to the veracity and legality of every payment made, whether it's to an individual or to the pension fund, we don't make that till that's been verified. And I would also ask for you to be amongst yourselves that not a single payment is made without the unanimous decision of the city council. I would like to make a comment. I think it was Mr. Agostis who made a comment, and maybe in response to Mr. Gussler, about the accrued time and the bank time, and mentioned the CSCA. I may be incorrect, but it was my understanding that under the new CSCA contract, the ability to, vacation days was increased, the ability to bank that, and a cap was taken over off of sick days. Is that your understanding?
The vacation days were increased to 80. I was asked about a concession, and I believe what I mentioned was that there wasn't a concession on that topic in the CSCA contract. That's all I got.
You said, I can't hear yours.
Oh, I'm sorry. I said there wasn't, when I was discussing that with Mr. Gussler, I mentioned that I didn't think there was any concessions with respect to those topics that you raised. And the vacation was raised from 75 to 80.
Went from 50 to 80?
Why?
No, in the CSCA contract, it went from 75 to 80.
Okay. I understood it to be 50, but in any event...
That's your time.
Let me just finish my point. You responded to me. Simple. If separation payouts are the biggest problem or accrued time in banking, and you've all said that's a real problem with this stuff, with these contracts, make sure the next time you negotiate a contract, you don't increase the ability of people to bank time. It's not good for the city.
Nope.
Thank you.
Anybody else dare to speak on the open, on the public?
I'm going to speak.
Sure.
Thank you.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Phyllis Labuti, Long Beach. I just want to make a point. I've been an educator for over 30 years, older than all of you. Usually, the expression is, "Let's float a bond." Well, I have to tell you something. Bonds don't float. They bury the cities or the school districts that float them. The definition of insanity, according to Einstein, is doing the same thing over and over again and expecting a different result. Mrs. Catley stated it very well. He said this has been going on for years and years and years. And I was up here in the 1970s, making the same statement. And now your debts are $115 million. Times that by 4 or 2%, and know that you are burying this city and it's driving these people insane.
Anyone else care to speak on the public hearing? Start. Yeah? Please state your name and address for the record.
Professor Solomon Wassman, proud resident of this city for 31 years, 42 years resident of this great country who brought me from a former Soviet Union. I have been to this council before, and I'm going to speak straight. Mr. Agostis and Mr. Tugli. On the 24th of May, I came to this building and I asked to deliver a letter to both of you. They didn't let me in, but the secretary came down and stamped on the letter, the third copy of it, that it was done on the 24th of May. What have you done? Did you invite me to meet me? It was addressing finances of the city. Last time I was here, what, three weeks ago? Mr. Agostis, you took a letter of mine, right? It was confidential information. Did you invite me to talk about it? Mr. Tugli, you were very busy with some kind of accident on the beach, right? Okay. You have a double duty. You probably will move on. I have the vision how this city can become financially insalvent. It will take time and work, but it can start working right away, from tomorrow. There were five or six paragraphs in this letter outlining how we can create $1 million of revenue coming into the city every year. How we can increase number of parking spots desperately needed by the city by between 18 to 1900 places. What have you done? I'm asking you because I'm your payer. What do you do? When would you start? When you will invite me? They don't like me on the fifth floor, whatever. It's okay. You want to feel vulnerable, start, but we'll have a discussion over there. Listen, okay, if I have a little bit of financial wisdom and engineering wisdom, why don't you use it? Is it because I have a keeper and Jewish? Listen, I'm on your position, Mr. Tugli, not the commissioner, but maybe city manager, or at least consultant, with one condition. I would have, I will work here in the office for the hours you will let me. I will ask you to do, but I want to have on the side my private business. I know, I have an understanding, and if you want to check and discuss it with me, how to improve financial situation of the city. When will you wake up and start moving here behind? I said my case. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Sir, one second. You can go next, this woman is coming down the aisle. Thank you. Name and address for the record.
Captain Tremondo, Long Beach, New York. First, I'd like to commend Umi Diamond for putting in her resolution. Umi, if you don't mind, could you read that resolution to me for the bond about not paying people who are not separated? Do you still have that?
When you finish your time, I'm happy to read the resolution.
I would like you to. I'm not going to take very long. I just want to hear the resolution. Okay, thank you. So it's my understanding that there is a difference between the amount of the bond and the total obligation? Okay. Is the difference in number about $400,000 between what we've been shown and what's actually being taken out? So it's my understanding that the previous payouts were about to the exempts who are not contractually obligated to get any money from the city upon their separation from the city. Additionally, they haven't separated from the city?
Mr. Tremondo, can you keep it about this item? Thank you. Can you just keep it about, restrict yourself? Mr. Tremondo, can you just please restrict yourself to this item? Thank you.
I am. I am.
Letter told. Let her talk.
Really?
Yeah.
Mr. Tremondo, please.
You're interrupting me.
Really? No.
It's $350,000. It strikes me that if you clawed back the money that was given to people who are not entitled to it and who are actually not separated from the city and are still here...
What strikes me, Mr. Tremondo, is you're not keeping into the... And, Mr. Tremondo, here's what else just struck me. You just flipped me off at a public meeting.
Let her talk.
It seems to me that you're still sitting here when you took separation pay.
Oh, how interesting.
Mr. Tremondo, you have anything to remain, Mr. Tremondo? You have anything to remain to this item?
It is totally germane. Because if they took back the $350,000, the amount of the bond would actually not have to be so excessive. It would be a cost-saving measure, something you should look into.
Take their names.
Everything's connected, is it?
Sir, please state your name and address.
Yep, right to my back.
I'm sorry. Harry Grant, Long Beach. Still on the Jackson Neiman, did they ever find out who signed his payout? We've been promised this since May. Who signed the payout? Okay. And second, if his payouts are found, because union people have a contract, all right? One second. If he got more than he was entitled to, is he also getting, is he getting pension payments from, if it's an illegal payout, is he getting pension payments from that payout? It is part of it. You know what?
That's against the law.
I'm paying your salary. I'm the taxpayer. I've been here... It's different than me walking into a bank and stealing money, all right? What you're doing, and don't give me the eyes, okay? You don't want to answer. But this is stealing, but this is stealing taxpayers' money, all right? If they're contractually entitled to it, if they're union people, and that's part of the contract. Sneerman was it, okay? He got double or triple what he has, and then you're paying money and a lot of other backroom deals.
Sir.
We're tired, but we're tired of it, okay?
We don't want it anymore.
And we're not going to take it much longer, all right?
No more!
So that first, we're going to see you all out.
Everything, everything that has to do with the previous bond is being looked at by the New York State Comptroller.
Why?
Are we going to find out who signed for Sneerman's?
Every single council member up here received every single email, which there was well over 100 that was forwarded to the New York State Comptroller's office in Hop Hop. Every single one of us. All that is being investigated, which is why we're here.
That is what you're told.
And now he... Yeah.
And it's happened. That was told us in May, okay?
And they said it would take 69 months.
Okay. Our concern was the people, if they're found that what they did was not legal, are we going to claw back?
If we find out that it was illegal, and that's probably...
Maybe this bond issue would have never even had to have been...
That's not true. That's not true. This bond was happening either...
No way!
Somebody want to know? Thank you for joining us. Good evening. Please state your name and address for the record.
Missy Miller. I'm from 105 Richard Street, Atlantic Beach. From what I'm hearing here this evening, you have a bunch of people here who are just begging, begging for transparency. That's all they're asking for. They just want transparency. They want the answers. They're not asking for hard things. They're asking, there's a discrepancy from what is written on a paper and from what they're being told in person. There's nothing wrong with them asking for an answer that, when they're being told something different. And to be answered in such disrespectful manner... I can't, I can't, it's unbelievable to me. This is a city council. This is not middle school.
Oh, yeah.
I really want to say, you know, please, be respectful. They're trying to be respectful. We're all trying to be respectful. We just want answers.
So to speak to that, this is the first time I've seen all the names and amounts listed in the actual resolution for transparency. The difference is because of the pension and the social security payments, which we said we would ask bonds council to include those numbers next time we have a bond like this.
And that was a discrepancy.
It's not really a discrepancy, but...
No, no. I think it was unclear what Denise Ford was originally asking for. If they're looking at one number and to just ask them to list what the extra payment amounts are for, not to say, "Oh, it wasn't included, that's something paid to the person." We understand that wasn't being paid to the person. It's being paid to a different fund, but it wasn't listed anywhere for us, the people, the residents, to see. They're only seeing one figure, yet we're bonding for another figure. There's a discrepancy. We're entitled to ask what the difference is.
And then we asked them to include it.
And spoken to as if the nerve of you to be asking. They have the right to ask. It's their tax dollars going to...
I agree with you. And that is why I asked, we're going to ask that to the owner next, if there is another agreement.
Thank you.
Because I agree with that. And even Ms. Ford said they do it very similar in the county. It's the same way. So I don't see a problem with including that figure on here. And we're not here to hide anything. This is what it is.
You're acting like manager. Very rude.
I just think that, sitting up as an elected official, you have a certain responsibility to try and be respectful to the people who are asking you questions. And I know from my seat, it's not always easy. We take a little bit of a hit here and there, and it's hard, but you got to suck it up. You got to just take it, take it on the shoulder and not answer in such a disrespectful manner just because you don't like what's coming at you. And I think Mr. Agostis has a little work to do when...
Okay. Please, please calm down.
We've never had the...
Please calm down.
It's a colleague, I appreciate your comments. However, I worked for the city for 12 years. You can't begin to envision this act of vice that I've made in this place. So when you say, when you say, "Have some work being..."
Please, please.
Do you see where I'm going? I mean, and resonate with the jury, and actually flips me off in the middle of the presentation. I don't think I'm being treated respectfully. I'm an employee, and you know something? I have just, you know, these are just fundamental...
Listen, I'm in this public eye also, and I've got plenty of negative comments and negative stuff, you know, geared towards me, and I just...
It's just a matter of decency.
Take the upper hand. I turn around, I walk away. I do not respond...
But my point is decency runs by the ways, that's all I'm trying to say.
No, you're a professional. You're up there. You're always the greatest.
President Aramo, as Mr. Cannon is coming forward, can I just make a quick statement? I just want to address the crowd. I think it's important that we, again, in the spirit of civility, let's all listen to one another. We don't have to agree. We can agree to disagree, but everyone has the right to say whatever it is that they're saying. We want to be respectful. This is city hall, this is a city council meeting, and we should respect that. So please, I'm asking, please, hold all comments until someone has finished saying what they're saying, and then we can move forward.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
You have to be respectful also.
I agree with that.
And Umi has to answer questions.
Name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Steve Cannon from 10 West Beach Street, Long Beach, New York. Thank you very much for doing the job you have to do. I understand that both sides of the situation here are hot, and I respect both sides. One of the things you just said, which is very pleasing, was to say that the investigation to what's going on with all the finances in town is proceeding. Is that correct?
I need to make that statement.
Is that, is that...
Our understanding of what was heard? Is the New York State Comptroller asked for everything and requested all the documents and received over 100 emails. We all received the same emails with hundreds of pages of attachments.
So you guys have provided what the 100 emails requested? You guys have provided what was requested?
Yes. And we received, and we received, every council member received copies of that.
Right. And so, but you guys also fulfilled what was requested?
Correct.
Okay. So can we get a, we update every meeting of how the investigation is proceeding? Not taking, can't get the results, I know that, but you can at least say, "We are up to this point of providing this. They've asked for this."
So they haven't issued any new documents in a while, as far as I know? Is that correct?
Yeah. Because it'd be great to know that the investigation is ongoing and is proceeding, and therefore, in October or whatever, there will be a conclusion to something. The word is, and I'm hearing, and again, there's no S, no fact or anything, a word means, you know, this word, that I'm hearing that there really is no actual activity going on in investigation. I've heard many politicians say, "We're going to investigate, we should do this," but I have seen nothing of documentation of it actually occurring. So anything you could supply that would concretely show us it's in the works and proceeding and update is on would be greatly appreciated.
Months ago, when this process started, I was told it would take six to nine months, and that was it.
But I'm asking, I know that...
I think everyone up here assumes it is ongoing.
I hear you. So I'm assuming, what I'm trying to do is make sure there's a way to every meeting, say, "Hey, by the way, here is the ongoing." And so we really feel comfortable in it ongoing, not just, "Oh, sometime in the future, we might hear about something."
And I think one of the benefits of the state doing the investigation or members doing it, whatever they find, they're going to make public. It's independent out of here.
Exactly.
Whatever we were, what was, excuse me, one second, sorry, was provided, everything we know, public knows, we're waiting as the public is, and if they want more, we'll provide more.
Right. So is it possible to get a satisfaction of some sort of, it is ongoing confirmation once in a while that we're at a phase, maybe phase one, phase two, phase three, of something from the city or from whoever? Not the city.
If we're in the main investigation, why would you take that?
Is there, who can we request that from? From the... From the...
First, we can make the request to the Comptroller's office, but we have to get back to the item here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else on the public hearing to authorize a $1.8 million bond for separation payments? Seeing no hands, I close the hearing.
Okay. Onto the regular calendar. Item one is the order to authorize financing for cost of separation payments. Two, for the benefits of employees in the city, stating the estimated total cost thereof. $1,800,300,600 appropriated said amount therefore, and authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $1,800,3600 bonds of said city to finance said appropriation. Hearing has been held on this item already. Item two has been tabled. Item three is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement for the construction of an office of emergency management and for the city of Long Beach with the lowest responsible bidder to amend the budget. Okay, this item is... Was approved a while back for plans to be drawn up for the office of emergency management. And now, this is to do the actual work involving those plans. All the money is feeable reimbursable from the Governor's Office of Storm Recovery.
Any questions from the council?
Just a clarification. What we're actually building is an emergency operations center, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. I just think there's a difference.
There is. An office of emergency management is a structure with people and equipment at facilities. What we're really building is a facility beyond an emergency operations center.
But we already talked about when we passed it last time, correct me if I'm wrong, of the personnel that would be in there and authorized it.
No, no. I get it. All to clarify here is that we're building the facility for the emergency, for the OEM.
Yes.
Yes. But eventually, it will be...
Yeah, yeah. I'm just clarifying.
No, just to give you a little bit better clarification. Just to give a little bit better clarification. There's a New York City OEM, Nassau County OEM. They don't operate 24/7 unless there's an incident. So, what you do is have an OEM, and then prior to an event, we activate it, and then at the completion of the event, we deactivate it.
Anyone from the public about the OEM? Mr. Gussel? Name and address for the record.
Good evening again, Jay Gussel, Long Beach. So, this is about $1.5 million or so to build a office, for lack of a better term, or a space in the back of this room, correct? So, we're talking about a carve-out from this room that would take away from the square footage available for the public to assemble to attend these meetings. Yes? And if I recall, last meeting or meeting before, it was an agenda item to remediate some asbestos as part of the ADA bathroom project downstairs. Yep? All right. We're standing here in sweltering heat with no air conditioning, right? So, why on earth would we want to dump another $1.4 million into this dilapidated, decrepit disaster of a building? Are you telling me that we can't take that $1.5 million? First of all, I question the necessity of it, but that's a whole other story. Allowing for the fact that there's $1.5 million out there on the vine that is ripe for us to pluck. Are you telling me that there's no better facility in this city, no better location, that we can dump this $1.5 million into and make a functioning facility? Instead of putting it there, taking away space that is available to the public to attend these meetings? And especially, in a building, the roof leaks, the AC don't work, it's riddled with asbestos. Come on, guys, we can do better than this.
Anybody else? Sure. Mrs. Adelson? State your name and address for the record.
Brad Adelson, 74 Long Beach Street. Does the resolution state that it has to be in this building? Or is the resolution basically to spend $1.5 million on an OEM office or space like that?
This is a process that's been ongoing for a long time. So, the grant application outlined this program. That was approved. We move forward with the design phase. The money can't be used for anything else.
No, maybe that does it have to be here as well?
Yes, because we already spent the money on the design based on the practice of this building.
Okay. So, yes, this building is old, and yes, there are problems. However, having been one person that, with some of you up here, was around after Sandy and sitting in Commissioner Tagney's office and being part of everything, I think that it is imperative, and nobody understands the importance... Or not nobody, but a lot of people don't understand the importance of having something in a place where our fire department is here, our police department, the proximity. It is desperately needed. I think that, you know, we all met in Commissioner Tagney's office, which was great, but it was small, and you had people walking in and out. And, you know, it's... I can't begin to say how important I think it is that you do this. And if it has to be here, it has to be here. But it needs to be done, and I really hope you pass the resolution.
Thank you, Ms. Adelson. Sir? Please state your name and address for the record.
Roy, that's the Long Beach. I know I mentioned it the last couple of meetings. Is there anything you've done to make sure we're not going to be just left with one bidder?
One bidder?
There were two bids received.
Oh, two bids received on this?
I didn't... I don't know that. It just says that... I haven't seen the bids. Lowest responsible bidder.
Whereas, do you advertise there are two bids received?
Okay. Even two? There's no way we're spending $1.5 million, we can get more bids?
There is standard process for putting these things out for bid. We can't force anyone to bid on them.
No, Mike. I know there's a standard process. But what I'm saying is, and I brought it up last time, you're getting a lot of only one bids, and in this case, two bids. If the standard process isn't working, maybe you can use a non-standard process. Thinking about us as taxpayers, so we get more bids, so we get a better deal. Do you think you could try to find some other way of doing it?
You could also work out, end up with a worse deal. You know what you have with these? If we send it out to bid again, and they decide both these companies are going to be the only two, and they bid higher, now we're paying a higher cost.
I don't understand that, Mike. When you put out to bid, you're putting it out to bid. You're getting... You're trying to get the lowest bid. Then you bet the company. You look at the bid, and then you bet the company.
Roy, if you put it out to bid, if I'm this company, and I say they wouldn't accept the $1.448 million, and they want me to rebid it...
I'm not saying rebid it. I'm not saying rebid it. I'm saying the process. No, you've already gotten the bids. I'm saying the process. What we're doing is only giving us one bidder or two bidders. And I'm saying, when you only have one or two bidders, you're not getting the best deal. You might be, but you're usually not. Okay? So, won't...
You're not just wanting to speculate.
That's what I'm asking. Yes, that's all I'm asking for a process to expand the scope.
Mr. Lester? The next item has five bids.
That's great. But this is a $1.5 million item, and it has two bids. No, sometimes you get a lot of bids, and sometimes you only get one. And that's what I'm arguing against, the one bid. There's something wrong with the process when you only get one bid or two bids. And I know Mike says this is the standard way of doing it. But if it's not working, let's look for a non-standard way. Thank you.
Commissioner Ramandow?
Hello. John Ramandow, Commissioner of Public Works. Spent most of my time here in Long Beach. I just wanted to give some people information on this OEM office that I think everybody's missing. First of all, this was one of the several projects that was picked out by the Governor's CRP Committee for revitalization. This is a project that the money has been made available to the Governor's Office of Storm Recovery. The bidding process was controlled by the Governor's Office of Storm Recovery. We were required to put certain items into contract to meet their standards. We were required to advertise in several of the publications that they told us we had to advertise in. This is the second time we bid it. When we bid it the first time, the bid came in higher than the allowable amount. That would have made us have to go back and rebid it under Wicks Law. So, we made some significant changes to the structure. The structure also includes a lot of unused space behind the wall here at... on the councilroom floor. So, this thing was done under tight supervision by the state. This also will not cost the city a dime. The money will not have to be laid out by the city. As we review the invoices of the contractor, we will review them, make recommendation to the state to go there. They will approve the payment, send us a check, and then we will forward that check to the contractor. So, I just want everybody to understand the way this process works. And I just wanted to take a few minutes to kind of calm people down about it.
Thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate that. Is there any other comments on the... Any other comments on the OEM? Seeing no hands, I call next item.
Item four is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with disposal of timeline debris on an as-need basis with the lowest responsible bidder.
Yes. Every year, we have a tremendous amount of seed meat that occasionally washes up on our shoreline. As it starts to decompose, it creates a horrible, horrible stench. We do clean it up right away. We moved it behind the... By the incinerator. And then the smell has impacted the neighborhood, the fine townhouse and such. So, to be more efficient and get rid of this noxious substance as quickly as possible, we have put out a bid that they have to respond right away on our request.
So, the situation we had last year is... Will be rectified?
It should not happen again.
Great. Anyone else from the council, any questions?
No, thank you. I'm just, again, just happy that we're moving forward because last year, the stench was just... It was unbearable in that area. Thank you.
Anyone from the public? Seeing no hands, next item.
Item four is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with the Woodmere Fire District for the performance of fire alarm dispatching service.
Yes. Lawrence Woodmere, the Woodmere Fire District separated with their current dispatching service. We put in a bid to them, and I'll call on our fire commissioner to explain the details.
Welcome, Commissioner Cummins.
Good evening. Up until about three years ago, we dispatched for across Long Beach Lawrence Cedarhurst and the Island Park Fire Department. About two years ago, Island Park decided to go in another direction and left us, and that was a loss of about $18,000 worth of income. That was a contract with them. I was approached a few months ago by the Woodmere Fire District looking for us to dispatch for them. We sat down with them, discussed numbers, and they put forward a number for the first year of the contract, $28,000, which is $10,000 more than we were receiving for Island Park when they left, with increases for every year of the five-year contract. There would be no expense to the city. All the equipment needed and any additional services would be paid for by the Woodmere Fire District. Our fire dispatchers are here in this building 24/7. They're all part-time employees with no benefits, don't accrue any time, and don't get any payouts when they leave. And they're here anyway. So, this will be $28,000 income to the city with no expense.
Great. Thank you. Anyone from the council, any questions for the question?
Actually, would this require any additional staffing? Any additional build-out? Any additional cost to the city?
No. No additional staffing like this. Every outdoor dispatcher on duty, 24/7. Woodmere Fire District is pretty much identical to the amount of calls Island Park had previously, that dispatcher handle. Obviously, if there is any major going on, as in the past, we would sometimes bring on a second dispatcher, which is like a straight hourly rate, not even overtime rate. And that is, you know, built in. So, for this purpose, there is no additional cost to the city whatsoever.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone from the public have any questions or comments about the dispatching from Woodmere Fire Department? Seeing no hands, next item.
Item six is a resolution authorizing the city manager to pay administrative costs under the Emergency Ten Protection Act, authorizing the passing on of administrative costs to the owners of buildings, including under such act, and directing the city patrol to make billing therefore.
Okay. Very basically, we have 60 rent-controlled units within the city. And to administer the program for those 60 units, the state charges a fee of $10 per unit, and the city charges a fee of $2. The city collects the entire $12 and forwards the $10 to the state. So, we would collect approximately $6,000, or exactly $6,072. $5,060 would pass immediately through to the state, and the city would capture the $1,012.
Any questions from the council? Any questions or comments from the public? Seeing no hands, next item.
Item seven is a resolution authorizing publication for hearing of a local law amending the charter of the City of Long Beach regarding Cold War veterans. As I am publication-only, hearing will be held July 17, 7:00 p.m. Onto the vote. Item one is the order to authorize financing for cost of separation payments. Two, for the benefit of employees of the city, stating the estimated total cost thereof is $1,800,300,600 appropriated said amount therefore, and authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $1,800,3600 bonds of said city to finance said appropriation. Just Woodmere Dobbs on the side of that amendment.
I will.
Second?
I will.
Glory, that's my agenda.
So, anyone that knows my view on bonding for these things,
So, anyone that knows my view on bonding for these things, that's how I feel about Look, we did as much due diligence as we can. We were given payout sheets. Unfortunately, we don't have twenty years' worth of people's employment time sheets to verify what's on here is accurate. I still have questions because some of the same people signing these sheets are some of the same people that signed some of the previous sheets that we now know had overpayments in them. So probably, I'm waiting anxiously for the results of the audit, but that being said, we did as much due diligence as humanly possible. I did approve the budget with the one point eight in it. I had told the council members here I would not support two point five, and they agreed to change it to one point eight to satisfy my concern, and since I did approve that in the budget, I do vote yes.
Yes.
A few things. In the words of many residents that were here, it's basically said that this has been going on for two long months, and it hurts me to hear that this has been taking place since the nineteen-seventies. Again, it was later said that the system is broken, and indeed it is. This resolution, the amended resolution as presented, is the beginning of inserting controls to fix the process. However, budget reform is still desperately needed. The formal process of documenting payouts must be approved. More importantly, independent forensic audit must still take place. And then lastly, the hiring of a comptroller is critical for us to move forward. With that being said, I vote yes.
I think I can share everyone's sentiment when I say that bonding and borrowing for this type of payout is not something that any of us like to do. It's not, it wasn't something we wanted to put in the budget, but we also recognize on the other end that these are employees who have given their service to our city for many years and who have counted on this as part of their retirement. And to turn our backs on them now, or the current employees, and signal to them that this is not something we're willing to adhere to, it's just not fair to them, no matter what union they're in. So for that reason, well, nobody wants to budget, and I think we continue and all await the audit from the comptroller's office and any other independent audits. But until that time, with this information that we have here and the list of employees, I vote yes.
I think we all hope there's a time when we don't have to borrow, or bond anymore for this, but seeing that this item is going to be unanimous, you could tell that whether you agree with a particular council person or not, that we will look at the information and come to the same agreement, so I vote yes.
Item three is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement for the construction of an emergency management for the city of Long Beach with the lowest responsible bidder to amend the budget. Would you adopt from this side?
I will.
I will.
So just everyone's clear, I was actually on the community reconstruction zone committee that allocated the money for this. This is not going to cost the city anything. This is being paid for by the state, so I vote yes.
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 I think this is a wonderful project that continues to make the city more resilient and more prepared in the case of an emergency, so I am proud to vote yes.
Yes.
Item four is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for the disposal of timeline debris on an as needed basis with the lowest responsible bidder.
I will.
I will.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Item five is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with the Woodmere Fire District for the performance of fire alarm dispatching service. Would you adopt from this side?
I will.
I will.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you once again to Commissioner Kimmens, with that being said, I vote yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Kimmens, I vote yes.
Item six is a resolution authorizing the city manager to pay administrative costs on the Emergency Tenement Protection Act, authorizing the passing on of administrative costs to the owners of the buildings included under such act, and directing the city controller to make billing therefore.
I will.
I will.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
And finally, item seven is a resolution authorizing publication for hearing of a local law amending the charter of the city of Long Beach regarding Cold War veterans. Would you adopt from this side?
I will. I will.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
City manager's personal report is to follow, but city clerk will make a motion to close the meeting. Second?
I will.
Yes.
Yes.
Just want to wish all the residents here a happy and healthy Fourth of July. I will.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Okay, now we answer our good and well-facored portion of the meeting. Every resident that wishes to speak gets three minutes of uninterrupted time. Please be respectful. And in the words of our former President Torres, maintain the quorum. And as we talk good and well-facored, Commissioner Miranda, would you like to speak? Please state your name and address for the record, welcome.
Hi, good evening, everybody. My name's Mindy Duffer. I wanted to discuss the city manager position, and I wanted to make a point that it should be independent, and the person should not be a city employee, and that we need to make sure that the person is not tainted. And I also wanted to make a point that Councilwoman Nissa Moore was very, I don't know how to say this, but she made a statement on Facebook a couple days ago that we all in Long Beach should be plastic-free in July, and when I saw that you guys all got plastic water bottles, I thought that was just a little tad out of context. I see that you have a water bottle that you brought, and I just think that, you know, Long Island's going to try to go plastic-free. I'm going plastic-free in July, no straws and everything, and I think that maybe city council should really try and do that, at least for the city council meeting, since it is being broadcast. You guys have all these water bottles here, it's just, it's just irritating, so, thank you.
I appreciate your comments, thank you.
Thank you.
Name and address for the record.
John Ashby, thirty-eight East Speed Street, thank you. Just a couple of follow-up questions. Mr. Kimmens was asking some questions about the comptroller investigation, and there's two different things to my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, but there was an audit which actually had been announced, I think it was reported in a letter issued by the New York State Comptroller before this city requested an investigation. So when you say six to nine months, that was my understanding of the audit, the full audit, as opposed to the budget review. Is that what we were talking about, or were you talking about the payout investigation?
My understanding, the separation payments is part of the audit of the city, it's part of it.
Okay, and there was reportedly a letter that was sent to the New York State Comptroller in mid-May that requested specifically that the separation payouts be investigated. Have you seen that letter?
That the council sent?
Yeah.
No, I don't.
All right, well, it's on the videotape. You all said that you would have a copy of that letter, because I've asked about it several times specifically by that week, and it was sent right here that you would.
I don't know that we sent it, we sent the letter. I know I said to you multiple times that I spoke to comptroller Tom DiNapoli personally a few times.
No, there was, it's on the videotape. Specific questions and statements about a letter specifically asking for an investigation of the separation payouts. Has anyone who would have seen such a letter? Because I can send you the video clips.
It's fine, I believe you do.
So you're not even aware of such a letter exists?
I did not sign a letter.
Mr. Agostisi, did you see it, draft it, sign it?
No, I don't recall.
Who would do that in the city? Who would draft it and send it to the New York State Comptroller, asking for an investigation of the separation payouts?
Probably the city manager.
Do you know if he did it?
I don't.
Ms. Diamond, have you seen that? Mr. Bendo?
I have not.
Ms. Moore?
No, I haven't seen it.
Mr. Mendel?
Especially if you had that video, if you could send it to me, just so I can...
I will send it to you. It's repeated several times. I'm going to send you each an email with exact video moments when that was said that there is such a letter, that it had gone out or would be going out that way, and be circulated to all the councils. Ms. Moore, do you remember that discussion?
Yes, but I'm just, the letter itself, because there are several letters, so can you just...
The one requesting an investigation of the separation payouts. Have you seen that letter?
No.
Have you seen it, Mr. Bendo?
No.
Well, if such a letter exists, I would ask that it be put on the city website.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Solomon Wasserman. Brendan Healy. Name and address for the record.
OEM, right. Oh, no, am I, did you talk about the OEM?
No, no, but that was last time, right?
That was last time, I talked about quality of life.
Minnesota's.
Minnesota's.
Yes.
Brendan Healy, sixty-eight New Hampshire Street, obviously in Long Beach. Talking a little bit about quality of life, but actually, just to go on the OEM thing for a second, as a practitioner, as someone who's had experience in emergency management, representing the private sector in Long Beach, examining, and planning for authorizing the resolution toward the OEM build-out, it's really imperative, obviously, the city, in this size, has an emergency operation center at the ready versus having an undesigned space that could certainly be why.
We appreciate your expertise, we really do.
Thank you. Second comment is why I came up here today, to talk about quality of life in the West End. I did send a letter to all the council members about, can everyone hear me by the way? I sent a letter to the council about a week and a half ago, a week ago, just about that, and I want to give a quick update. So first of all, thank you for taking the opportunity to read that letter. The West End is plagued with significant quality of life issues during the summer months. Many visitors come to the West End, particularly at two o'clock, three in the morning. Those visitors, in many cases, ravage our streets and really create havoc across our neighborhood. Last weekend, the police department did a fantastic job in stepping up enforcement. Commissioner Tagney, I think he instructed Lieutenant Stark and as well as other members of the department, bicycle patrols, and really it was a really good effort. At the same time, the members of the community who came to our West End Neighbors Meeting last week as well took proactive enforcement by stopping trespassers going on their property. It was one weekend, there was a very good show of force, and what I'm specifically asking for here is that we keep up not only that show of force, but we look at different solutions on how we can cost-effectively increase enforcement in the West End. It does cost money, obviously, to have bike patrols, I'm not sure where that money came from, but it is expensive to do that time and time again. So again, the West End Neighbors really does appreciate that from a quality of life perspective, and we thank you for taking our concerns into consideration. The last item on that is to ask for a public safety commission. I believe there is one in the city today. It's on the website, I don't know if it's actually in existence or not, but I'm asking that the city consider re-establishing the public safety commission. I saw some names on there, Liz Truss and LeBlanc was a member on that as well, that we reinvigorate that commission and/or committee, and that could help apply on continually improving our quality of life issues in the West End. Those are my comments, and thank you. Everyone got my letter?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for reading it.
I was on vacation, so I haven't seen it yet, but I have a shot of it.
Yeah, it's in there.
Can I just ask one question?
Yes, sir.
As part of the quality of life issue, has there been discussion of potentially starting a neighborhood watch type thing?
I think that's a great suggestion. I think what people have done, block by block, some people on certain blocks have taken that on their own accord, but I think it's a great suggestion, something that can be cost-effective. You know, I know the auxiliary police do stop at eleven p.m., I know they operate under a loose civil, you know, protection law, so I don't know, they can be out as well, but I think we need to look at those sort of solutions that are cost-effective to the city.
The council board have given some success called Neighborhood Walks.
Neighborhood Walks.
Have taken some with our, and they're, just seeing the presence is, has an impact.
Yeah, the city actually, if you post on the website, I know the police commissioner posted, that the number of police officers are obviously outnumbered by the visitors to the West End, and it's unfortunate because we do have a significant, well, it's fortunate we have great visitors to the West End, obviously, but we do need to have an additional show of force in presence, so any cost-effective way we can do that.
Yeah, absolutely, just want to add and speak to that, that absolutely, when other members of the community see their fellow neighbors, it really, it creates a level of accountability, and you will see over a period of time that the behavior will shift because of that. So I think I would absolutely encourage that, I would encourage that in your area as well.
Right, and that's something that the public safety commission, if we start up to look at, I'd ask that to happen as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Lou Dubow. Appears that Mr. Dubow might have left. Christina Kramer. Please state your name and address for the record.
Christina Kramer, three-sixty twenty North Line. So first of all, I'd like to say I'd like to be anywhere in Long Beach except for here, when we have, you know, a drink in a bar or someplace else, but I feel it's really important that I am here because of the quality of life in the east end of the beach. When, in the beginning of the season, they posted a sign on the east end saying no volleyball playing on the Franklin side of the beach, and there was no other signs anywhere else. And we had this meeting that said we could play from Franklin East, and then when we put up our nets again, we were told to take them down. I just want to go over a couple points that, you know, volleyball is part of the Long Beach community, and many of us in the community have moved here because we love the beach, we love the swimming, we love the surf, and it's a great way for us who are getting older to keep active lifestyles. We are never on the receiving end of the emergency services or in the way of emergency services. I've never heard of a person not receiving emergency care because volleyball nets were there. It seems to me like Paula Gillespie is running the designation of where volleyball can be played, and I'm not, I'm not sure why he isn't, isn't, aren't the lifeguards in charge of the safety of the swimmers and not the comfort of the bathers, which by the way, volleyball players always play in the back of the beach where nobody wants to sit anyway. I've taken pictures over the summer, many, many years, and nobody's back there, and for some reason it's irritating to either some condominiums or some people, or I don't know what the real reason is why we can't play in the back of the Franklin Boulevard beach, but I keep being told there's a city ordinance, but that same city ordinance also says we can't play ball or throw frisbee and other silly things. And I understand there was some come to Jesus in a small meeting, my husband was there, but he came out of that meeting with a different understanding than some of the other people in that meeting, so I'm asking for clarification of the ordinance. I'd like some justification why we can't play on our beach and it's not because it's too small. We've been playing there for years, and it's not any smaller than it has been in past years. And if there is a city ordinance that says we can't play, why isn't it global? Why are we selectively being pinpointed? There's a little part of us that thinks we're being harassed for something. We don't know what the underlying reason is, but we'd like to know what it is, and we'd like it publicly stated. So that's all my time. I couldn't go into all the reasons why it's so hard to be in public.
No, so I think, I think everyone here appreciates that Long Beach is definitely part of our culture, and when this issue pops up every couple of years, there's some issue. We had asked the commissioner to, you know, get Phil Regoner and Paul Gillespie and convene a meeting with everyone, and that meeting did happen, that your husband was at, and my understanding was that it was taken care of and clarified, so beyond you telling us that there's still an issue, that's new to me.
And I do think, just for, to clarify, I think one of the issues with why the lifeguard, the chief of lifeguards was involved with the issue, is that there's the emergency lane, and look, I was not at that meeting, so I don't know the...
Understood, we understand, it's all the little players in the emergency lane, we're always courteous to it. What I believe happened is somebody, one of the inconsiderate volleyball players put their net near the ramp, and then they walked off the beach, and that pissed the lifeguards off. And we're willing to man or follow rules, but just to take it away from our whole community of that area, I have kids.
Well, I don't know that that wasn't taken away this past weekend, that's the beach that I use, I live on Franklin.
I saw you at the beach, and I was going to talk to you, but I didn't want to interrupt your beach day, I couldn't do it. I was standing ten feet from you.
Lots of people do.
But it wasn't, it wasn't being played on the beach, they took it down.
But in the, I mean, I thought I saw it on Saturday, but...
Saturday and Sunday, I was down there. They, whatever it is, went to go set up at ten-thirty, Paul Gillespie himself came down and told us to take the net down.
I think that it's, I think that there was a resolution that it could be, that there were, that was the information that we received.
That's my understanding, because I received several messages from people, because Lincoln is my beach, and I heard from a lot of people who are on Franklin, and it was my understanding that there had been a positive solution reached with respect to the communication.
Can I, wait, what I think the discrepancy was, they walked out of the meeting and said Franklin East is playable. When you walk down the Lincoln Boulevard ramp, if you look to the left, that's technically Franklin Beach. If you go to the right, that's the Surfer Beach. So we set up our net right on Franklin Beach, and they came and told us to take it down both days, so...
And lastly, it's also my understanding, because we just had conversations with the commissioner before we came down, it was my understanding that there is a meeting, there's going to be a meeting that will be held on Monday with respect to this issue. So apparently, there's another meeting, and this is, I guess, in reference to what you're saying now about Franklin slash Lincoln perspective, but that meeting is going to be held on Monday.
I realize there's so many other pressing issues in Long Beach, and this is just a little...
But it's still important.
It's fine.
It's part of the quality of life, it's still important.
And as far as emergency services, don't we have them across the entire beach wire, these beaches being singled out? I don't understand. We've been playing there for years without problem, so...
Hopefully, that meeting on Monday will give you some clarification.
The good news is that when the article finishes the project, there should be plenty of them for everybody.
Yes, thank you for this meeting, and I look forward to hearing the resolution today.
Thank you. Phyllis Labuti.
I spoke before.
Okay, thank you. Jim Kirkland. Please state your name and address for the record.
James Kirkland, Riverside Boulevard in Long Beach. Last week, there was an article in the Herald about Mr. LaCarubba having returned to the fold, and it seems strange that he had been working... and it seems strange that he had been working as employee of the city for a couple of years and nobody seemed to know about it. He'd been hired as a consultant at $40,000 a year and then all of a sudden, you know, he relinquished that job or was no longer needed at that position and by that very afternoon, he was again hired. And it, it just seemed kind of weird that you go from $40,000 to $130,000 just by signing a piece of paper, which is amazing. And the question is, did he no longer get the $40,000 or is he getting the $40,000 plus the $130,000? And so that's part of one question. The other question is, how is he able to be employed here for two years and nobody seemed to know about it? I don't know some control of the personnel here in town, but the council seemed to, should have some. He was, you know, at a very fairly high level, he was an exempt employee. So I would think you would all know one another, he's not a stranger, you recognize him always. So why, he existed for two years and nobody knew about it seems kind of bizarre. And if, if, if somebody was supposed to tell you about it, that they retired him and hadn't, why wasn't that done? So those are just some of the questions I have to have.
I would just say that the council receives documentation on every single hire, whether it's the beach clicker for $6.50 an hour or the most highest paid employees we receive once a month, I believe it is a personnel report. This month it's a little thicker than usual because of all the beach hires that we have. But if a council member chooses to read or not read that is, you know, that's, I don't know why anyone would know.
But it was, it went off for two years. It didn't just happen, I mean, it went off for two years.
And also the hiring of senior staff is the prerogative of the city manager, so.
Of, of who?
The city manager. But it wasn't him, Jim LaCarubba was long gone and he worked for the former city manager, Ejection Irwin, so.
Right, well, it's just that I know he also negotiated that wonderful contract we have, that's all been ended. But in any case, I'm just curious as to, you know, how this managed to happen so long a period of time.
And Mr. Kirkland, just to clarify a point, I think you said, was the city not aware if he was employed?
It was more, more less.
We were aware if he was employed, it was the capacity in which he was employed.
Yeah, that's, that's, yeah, that's what I'm referring to. Yeah, because he was a 1099 and then all of a sudden he becomes, you know, a regular employee. That's a big difference.
Ms. Blanchett, here to talk about fashion. Please state your name and address for the record.
Allison Wench. So what I signed up to speak about, I actually already spoke about before, so since I have three minutes, you know, I'm not going to pass when I can spend three minutes talking about transportation, my favorite thing. These are things that I would talk normally to the head of transit about, but I'm no longer allowed to speak to Michael Robinson. I'm not allowed to stand near him and I'm not allowed to look at him. Did you know that? I know you didn't know that, that's what he told me. I was hoping to say, hopefully he'll see this and hear that, all this kind of BS. So I'm going to run down a few things. I've been receiving so many phone calls and text messages and Facebook messages about bike lane signs and boardwalk MIA because apparently I am the Department of Transportation because our two department heads don't do anything. So I've received a bunch of messages, we don't have the signs on there, but what I have been doing every so often is I've been chalking bike lane in different colors on, on there and I've been hearing comments from people, don't tell Ty if you even do that, it'll arrest me. But I've been doing that and I've been hearing comments that it works and people like it. So just a little, a little bit of tactical urbanism and I probably will continue doing it, so try to stop me. Trolley, oh, bus schedules. The bus schedule at the train station that I've been complaining about for years, it got changed, thank you. If we could get bus schedules at every single bus stop, that would be wonderful. Of course, we'd actually need signs at the bus stops too. Trolley signs. Again, we've had this trolley that Michael Robinson boasted about when he ordered it, how cool it would be. We have not had trolley signs, like the, you know, there, there was an acknowledgement of the electronic sign over by Long Beach Road and Park I saw on my way in saying, you know, expect traffic, take the trolley. But where do you take the trolley? Like there's no signs and even at the train station when people are coming off the train, we want to encourage them to jump on the trolley, right? Because we want them to visit the West End and we could probably use some wayfinding signs as well to tell people to get to the West End or the East End or whatever. The sign is advertising a service, you know, it just makes sense. The public safety commission that that West End guy talked about, yes please. I've been talking about the transportation and public safety type of committee that I've been emailing Jack about, but of course he never listened to anything I said, so that never happened. But I think that kickstarting that would be wonderful and I am going to throw my name into the hat for that, of course. And part of public safety is some things that we are lacking, which I've been talking about for a while, pedestrian and bicycle outreach and education. We have the highest bicycle commuters on Long Island. It's insanely amazing, but we have no education or anything. Tap grants. I spoke with, thank you Mandell for helping me out on that one. I spoke with, yes, I know, I know, but I'm finishing my sentence. I spoke with Patty Horn about that. Our DOT is not applying for tap grants. I offer to write this grant, I'm in the system, I can help write, I just need the, the city to be the sponsor for it. I'm really disappointed that we have two DOT people who aren't applying for grants. Okay, and last thing, traffic cameras. Cameras, moving cameras, flashlight cameras, just throw them everywhere, please.
Thank you, Ms. Blanchett. Kevin Martinson.
Hello?
Good evening, state your name and address.
Kevin Martinson, 447 East Harrison. So, you know, last thing I wanted to do is come here on Eve or Fourth of July, but I felt compelled to be here because I felt, you know, a lot of issues that our best interest as a, as a citizen is not being looked after and I just wanted to give you, give you my reasons. I was initially upset recently that the city basically kicked us off our beach on Franklin Boulevard and not, because we were playing volleyball. And that's basically our, our beach. We have families, the families play volleyball there. And it's not, I know that everyone says, well, just move down to Neptune. It's, it's not that easy, you know, we have, everybody here, probably in the beach you go to and that's your beach, right? And so going down to Neptune is really, you go into a, you might as well be going to Jones Beach, you know, as far as I'm concerned. So that hurts because that's what we do when we go to the beach. We either surf or we play volleyball. So that was pretty upsetting and I don't see the reason for, for the, for the move. The only reason I try to come up with, and I might be wrong about this, but there is a multimillion dollar condo there called the Aqua and the condo has, you know, they have a concierge service right on their, right on their website. It's 27, 24 hour concierge, they're allowed to put all their chairs down there. But this is a, this is not a private beach, this is a public beach. So I don't know what the issue is. A lot of us think it might be the condo, maybe it's some people are complaining, but whatever it is, I think we can work it out and have our volleyball courts in the same spot because we can self-police over there. You know, there's enough of us that can say, hey, what's the issue? Oh, you're blocking, I can't get by, we're blocking, we'll move the volleyball net to a different area, it's not an issue for us. We're trying to be very respectful to the people that, but there's plenty of beach there, there's plenty of beach on Franklin. So I think the issue that happened was when you thought it was, when we thought it was solved, I don't think anybody knew, like, when they were talking about Lincoln, I look at Lincoln as the surf beach between Jetty and Jetty. We don't play over there, we play on Franklin. So we were told to play on, we could play on Franklin, but they meant Neptune. There was, there was a lot of misunderstanding there. But during this whole process, you know, I hear that Long Beach is currently in $150 million in debt, but the city would rather, and this is one, this is really close to my heart, I'm wearing the shirt right here, but it seems like the city right now, and I was surprised about this, would rather take money from our local charities like the Polar Bear or the Make-A-Wish Foundation, for the, for the Make-A-Wish Foundation or the Michelle O'Neill Foundation for Cancer. And these two charities, as far as I'm concerned, put this place on the map and, you know, instead of trying to retrieve the money from the, from the separation day or whoever got paid wrongly, you know, we're, we're now going to try to take that money from, from these charities. So in conclusion, you know, I, I think it's time to stop harassing families who live here and play volleyball on the beach and it's time to stop shaking down our charities because we're in debt right now. And I just, it's never been done before, we're not asking for money from the charities before, but now we're asking money for the charities. So those are my two issues, you know.
So, you know, we all appreciate the volleyball and we all appreciate all having your beach. You know, I think many folks I know when they were displaced from Superstore Sandy were living on one side of the beach but loved their stuff all the way to the other side to go to their beach. So we appreciate that, we thought the situation was taken care of. And as far as the mix-up goes, sometimes I think, like, so I use the beach I call Connecticut because that's the route I go over, but the lifeguards refer to that as Ohio Beach. Ohio was too down. So I think there's some sort of miscommunication that hopefully this meeting councilwoman Moore talked about on Monday will rectify the situation because we're not looking to kick anyone off. We know that residents know not to be in the, in the emergency lane, residents know these things.
Yeah.
The visitors sometimes don't know that and they usually just get moved to, to another location. So we're not looking to kick anyone off the, off the branch. As far as the special events goes, we did table it because there's still a lot of questions we have. But our, our beach and, and our city get used by many organizations and it's just, I guess the council felt that it came to a point where it's at least a conversation that we should have in that how much of city resources should be used for certain organizations? Any organization, there's no, you know, whether it's a charity or a church or a political event, whatever it's going to be, how much of the city resources are we willing to invest in, in these events? Now, if you're wearing the Polar Bear sweatshirt or Long Beach T-shirt, those are scenarios. You go anywhere in the country and you're going to see that shirt, so. So, so there's a lot of considerations to be made and I think that the council, I think wisely, decided collectively to table it. I think maybe we need to have a conversation with some of the larger organizations, which would be Polar Bear and AOH and Michelle O'Neill, those are the three biggest events, to come to some sort of solution because not everyone does participate in those things, right? So where's the balance between the all residents and the special events? And that includes Pride too, right? So that's another big event that we host. Our, our beach is spectacular and people want to use it for lots of different reasons.
And one point that I'd like to make, and I'll get down, thank you for, thank you for your time, is that I, I did, I would have a hold of a Polar Bear party in my house with my wife and we'd raise every year about $20,000 for Make-A-Wish, but never ones to be taken, to send that $20,000 to pay for our Polar Bear party. I just think it's, it's something like, you know, you, you look at these Make-A-Wish things and the kids that get wishes and, I mean, it's powerful and it is, plenty of kids in this town that have gotten wishes and.
It's a holiday here.
Yes.
I mean, it's an amazing, amazing organization, it disputes that and giving these wishes to children is, you know, it's, it's an unbelievable day here, but, but then what they do is also unbelievable. And seeing the photographs, you know, we all, we all experience it the same.
Yeah, I just hate to see like a wish be taken away from one kid because the city had to take, you know, five, 10 grand, 50, I heard 50 grand thrown around, you know, I would just hate to see that, you know.
Well, there's, I mean, there's lots, right, the Electric Light Parade, there's all these different events, you know, and at what point does that number become too big for all the residents? And that's the conversation we need to have.
All right, great, we'll look forward to it next on 17th, right?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Ms. Liz Truss. Good evening, just state your name and address for the record.
Liz Preston, Long Beach. I recently sent everybody an email, so I'm going to actually just read that for the record. One, I'd like to thank the LEOs and the lifeguards and everyone in the last few tragic events. I'm trying to be idealistic in the face of a city far from recovery of a natural disaster only to find itself now in the midst of a cataclysmic man-made wonder. Initially I wrote this as helicopters were hovering in darkness looking for a boy. Now we know a child and a young man are deceased from the waters we fill our backyard. There are smarter people than I that have programs throughout other areas of the country where their backyards are bays, rivers, creeks and oceans. Should we take the lead and teach water safety outside our city limits? I would also like to address last meeting. The city council has an expectation as a whole that the gallery understands procedures and functions of how a city council meeting flows. We assume there will be a pledge of allegiance and subsequent agenda items. Is a 10-minute break scheduled in every meeting? When a member is missing from the dais or leaves mid-meeting, it is not our business to know why they leave, but an announcement would be amiable to those that spend their Tuesday evenings trying to understand the complexities of city government. The last few meetings, our acting city manager has left the dais without explanation. Again, he is missing. Last meeting, the attorney left, again with no explanation. When I asked the sitting vice president, Mr. Kalinsky, from the side, "He doesn't have to be here," I was taken aback. Why doesn't the attorney need to be there? Or the current acting city manager to advise you or answer questions from the public? What is the protocol? No one knows, not even some council members. We sign our names up front, which again, new people don't know how to do. In all fairness, as Dean of Fiori suggested, those that arrive early and sign in should go first during good and welfare. I've just learned that the president sitting does all the shuffling of the papers and chooses who goes first and last. So thanks for that, 11 o'clock meeting. The vitriol on the sixth floor is palpable. The last six months, the chaos is negative and these word games grow weary and serve no purpose but to divide a once vibrant community of neighbors helping neighbors. This falls at your feet. We look to you as leaders, but to, you appear to take directions from outside the city or other entities, our trust is lost. We are in the seventh month of no city manager or controller and issues that will impact our city for decades to come rest on the shoulders of the ill-equipped for the decisions that need to be made that are fair and just for every resident. This is not a reflection on our police commissioner. He is a great man that truly loves the city, that he has taken an oath to protect. It's been over a year and I know my time is up. That Mr. Torres stated questions would have follow-up, so people do not have to come here and repeat themselves time and time again. What happened? Where are the committees we are supposed to have? Brendan just answered, ask that. Do you know? I'll be happy to tell him. How does one get before the ethics board? I've asked this before. Frankly, from what I've witnessed, it is something you should all consider or is that not what an ethics board is for? Answer, what is the ethics board for? Okay. I ask you to begin explaining to the residents what it is you are responsible for. If it wasn't for Mr. Fando and Ms. Moore actually reading and scrutinizing what is in the city's charter, surely we'd have all followed blindly off the cliff, not caring what awaited us at the bottom. That is until we have to pay for the former city management's perpere miscalculations. I remain circumspect, moving forward. Any answers? No one knows what the ethics board does.
Your time is up, Ms. Trustin, thank you.
And thank you for not making me go last.
I'm happy to answer that question, Ms. Trustin. You know, Ms. Trustin, I'm, I'm happy to answer your question about the ethics board. They have a very discreet set of responsibilities that involves primarily. They have a very discreet set of responsibilities that involves primarily investigating potential financial conflicts.
Ta-da!
Financial. I'm not sure what the bigger real is, I'm just, I'm answering your question.
So how would I, how would we, how would anyone say, let's get together?
I'm not voting, what are you trying to add?
You just said something that's about finding a compromise, or, sorry.
She wants to know how bad the board gets together.
But you can start taking here.
The Ethics Board is complaint driven, so that's what triggers the meeting.
So everybody's been making, so how, but that's not my answer. Because I'm already asking this question.
That was my answer.
So how, what's it?
How do you, how do you contact the Ethics?
I think the question is...
Okay, okay, hold on, hold on, hold on. Rob, do you wanna finish it?
No, that was my answer.
That's his answer. Financial discrepancy.
If I remember correctly, Ms. Trachten, the last time you had asked a complaint was to go before the Ethics Board, our Corporation Council answered your email, that that was not something based upon the, I guess, the parameters of the order? No, 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 I understand that, but I think, I guess that's the way that it happens, is that you send an email, make a complaint, and if it's something that falls under purview of the Ethics Committee, that it's handled by them.
I think for purpose of clarification, for over a year, several residents have come to these meetings asking about being appointed to various committees, and the Ethics Committee was actually one of those committees. So I think, I believe your question is really about how does someone go forward with respect to being appointed to the Ethics Committee?
No.
How do you contact the Ethics Committee?
You can send an email to me, I'm a member ex officio, but I agree with your answer.
So the Ethics Committee is supposed to be, if somebody wanted to go to the Ethics Board, confidentially speaking, i.e., not against you, but if they, if they wanted to make a complaint or lodge a complaint, how do they go about being contacted directly without, if it's about a city official in general? There should be some level of anonymity, or...
A member ex officio, which means I'm a member by virtue of holding another position with the city, named the Corporation Council, I'm on the Ethics Board, so if you, I'm gonna get that complaint one way or the other, and there's no such thing as a confidentiality provision, it's all foilable.
Okay, so if we were, if we were to have, if somebody wanted to have a meeting with the Ethics Board, they would come, no, I'm just wanting, I'm trying to help Liz here, get her out of this.
I know, but it's her, it's...
It's not just her, it's a lot of people.
No, it's her three, no, it's her three minutes.
The process is, you contact, you, the contact, the first point of contact is to go to Rob, is that the first point of contact?
I'm saying that you're more than welcome to do that.
Okay, and if you, so we have to get approval whether you're gonna allow somebody to meet with the Ethics Board or not. You're gonna make the decision whether that person is allowed to meet with the Ethics Board.
If a complaint is received, what we do is convene the board.
Okay.
Ms. Vining?
When was the last time the Ethics Board met?
I bet I could know. I don't know the answer to that question.
But I thought you said you were a member?
I don't know. Since I became Corporation Council, I've...
Well, so it hasn't met since you've been Corporation Council?
What I'm trying to say is, I remember, since I became Corporation Council, it has not been in that time.
Okay, you've been Corporation Council for how long?
Two thousand, January two thousand and fifteen, so a little over three years.
So, January of two thousand and fifteen, so three and a half years the Ethics Board has not met?
Right.
That's correct.
Ms. Vining?
Just one last thing to the boards and commissions, and I know we've spoken about it, and I'm sorry I'm kind of talking out here, but the boards and commissions that are listed on the city website, list people on the Ethics Board, for instance, that are not, if you talk to some of those people on the Ethics Board, they are not on the Ethics Board. So I've asked repeatedly for those lists, it's an embarrassment to us as a city that our website is antiquated and outdated.
Thank you, Ms. Fury. Ms. Vining? Name and address for the record.
Judy Vining, Fortiny's, away all my life, I thought I lived on Lincoln Beach, by the way, now my dad is fragile. So I can understand the confusion on everybody's part. In terms of, I just wanna pick up on a couple of things, in terms of the Public Safety Commission, which might need, at this point. Certainly, Long Beach aware, we'd like to be included if you talk about, because there's lots of levels of safety that are simply physical safety. I hope you all got the letter that we sent to you today, I hand-delivered it yesterday to the city manager's office, it went, but I would like to read it into the record, although that is not the topic for tonight, about the festivals, it's an important one. And so, at the June twenty-seventh meeting of Long Beach Aware Coalition, there was a unanimous vote to authorize the executive director to send this letter on behalf of Long Beach Aware to you, with copies to the City Council and the Corporation Council. Long Beach Aware's longstanding objection to having alcohol on public property remains. However, we, as well as other experts in the field of prevention, do recognize that there is a difference between one-time events and freestanding structures licensed to sell alcohol on a daily basis on city property. That said, there are suggestions and guidelines from organizations such as the CDC, Community Anti-Drug Coalitions of America, Johns Hopkins School of Public Health, among others, as to how to best manage these events to minimize the negative impact that can occur without having some strict guidelines. Part of the, part of Long Beach Aware's mission is to educate the community, as well as the decision-makers, about the latest research surrounding alcohol and other drugs. In this way, those in a position to enact legislation are on with the facts and will research suggestions on how they can make the best possible choices. We are happy to meet with you and/or your representatives to further discuss these issues, including what criteria with respect to them, what, how the city clerk would determine whether alcohol is to be allowed. You guys did an amazing job of following some of these, or police departments in town, all of you, of following some of the guidelines in the Pride Parade, and also at the Long Beach Film Festival. Among other things, these are some of the suggestions. Separate distinct areas, which is the only place where alcohol can be served and consumed. Double perimeter around the restricted area. Security to screen for under and over twenty-one. No one under twenty-one allowed in the restricted area. ID bracelets for those over twenty-one, I'm just gonna keep talking because everybody else did.
Please finish as quick as you can.
ID bracelets for those over twenty-one who enter the restricted areas. This was an interesting one to me. Clear twelve-ounce cups designated solely for alcohol beverages, first overjuiced the size, but also makes it very clear who's drinking wine. No more than one drink for persons sold or served at any time. No more than three drinks sold or served to one person during the course of the event. And all alcohol sales or services stopped at least one hour preferably to, prior to the close of the event. These things make one-time events manageable and safer for the community, sends an equally important message to our youth that it's okay for adults to drink in a responsible manner, it's not okay to have the pre-rules that we've seen. And so that's an important piece of it as well. And as a side, just in the last month, there were five notices of application to the State Liver Authority. One of them didn't make it on the website, I understand people can make mistakes, that's not a problem, but I'm wondering why it's not up there now. And three of them are now operating under temporary licenses, which will take them through September. So, in the past month, we've added three more places to our ninety-plus that sell alcohol beverages, so something you guys need to be aware of. Thank you.
Thank you, Fury. Consistent advocacy on this issue. Ms. Amy Potter?
Amy Potter, East Penn Street. I'm just trying to get some clarification about the mobility mats. On your website, it says that the city will provide extended mobi mat access to the surf line of the beach at the following locations, Long Beach Road, Lafayette Boulevard, and Tennessee Avenue.
I would, I'll let you finish your comments, and then I'll ask the TPW Commissioner to come up and speak.
My mom is eighty-one, she suffered a stroke. She has been fiercely independent, lives here in town. You probably see her, she rides a red tricycle to church, to the grocery store, up and down the boardwalk, and she can't go to the beach anymore unless I'm with her. The mats go not even to the lifeguard stand. Surf line. I have an article about the Commanding Officers Association donating one with flaps so family members can sit around. That was last July seventeenth. That's all, I'm just curious if...
I mean, I know that the entire city council has advocated for the mobi mats to be placed in as many locations as possible, and we appreciated COVA's donation last year.
Where is that one?
I think that one, if I remember correctly, was destroyed. Yeah, so I'll let the Commissioner come up and speak.
Well, I just wanna say, the press release that the commanding officers gave out said that this type of mat is used, US military truck, military drive tanks over them and land helicopters on them. And ours was destroyed?
Yeah, I think by the...
By a tank?
By, no, I think by sand, by the rigs that clean up the beach, I think. It's out for repair, so it's coming back. Could you speak about the location? And I know we came up with a little bit of a broader plan this year for the mobi mats, and hopefully allow access for everybody to our beaches, in as much places as possible. I know the entire council has advocated for that.
Yes, and we did put together a complete plan with input from both beach maintenance and from the lifeguards. And I did tour the beach the other day, and, you know, we're gonna have to rectify a few things, a few things have changed. We have added in each one of the guard shacks, there is the information on where the ADA accessible beaches will be, there's also a phone number, so if a person shows up at a beach that doesn't have a mobi mat that goes to the surf line, we have six wheelchairs that are made for taking disabled people onto the beach. And all they have to do is call, within five minutes, a lifeguard will be there with one of those chairs.
Can I just say, I asked about that, I have to be there to push the wheelchair, so if someone wants to go...
Okay, these are special wheelchairs, my understanding was, I'm not in charge of lifeguards, my understanding was lifeguards take them out that I told them.
That was my understanding, too.
I was told by the lifeguard that they don't have the manpower to wheel people to specific spots on the beach, but that they would meet me and kind of hand over the wheelchair to me, but then it was my responsibility to bring her to where she wants to sit.
I'll review that with the chief of lifeguards.
With the chief of lifeguards. And in terms of adding more mobi mats, are we in the process of that, or they allow? Where are we?
There should be three mobi mats that'll be out, where we have ADA accessible bathrooms, that would be Lafayette and Long Beach, and at Madison, at Madison, Minnesota, at Virginia now, eventually it'll be at Minnesota. We are trying to add extensions to them, so that when you come off the crosswalk, that the mat's not right there, because when the mat's right there, everybody uses them, and then they take...
But they're supposed to be for...
You know, I'm trying to talk, and I'm trying to tell you what we're doing, okay? And there's, so what we decided was we take a twenty-five...
I can please my four minutes.
Okay, Commissioner, please. Please. I know, I know, I know.
I've been here since eight o'clock this morning, you know?
Thank you.
So I know, you know, we're working on it, we'll rectify all situations.
Okay. And we'll follow up with the guards, to find out about the, I think everyone here is under the impression that the guards do wheel folks out to the spot that they wanna be in. Yeah, so.
But you might just, you might wanna change the website that says to the surf line.
Where they are, okay.
No.
The intention is to bring them to the surf.
They're in the places, but they, they don't even reach where the lifeguard is.
Yeah, it's one section at this point, right?
Yes.
Okay. The intention, as I just heard the Commissioner say, was to bring them to the surf line. They, the issue is with beach masons, picking them up and moving them to be able to rake the beach. The beaches don't look like that by accident, they're out there at six o'clock in the morning, I think, every single day raking them, so. Everyone's advocating, I know, we all have advocated for equal access for everybody.
Absolutely. And hopefully we can have some information from the lifeguards, so that they can speak to the process, because it's already July, and we're right back in the same situation we were here last year, and so we need to do this right away.
What was that name? Jay Gossel. You're up, Jay. Name and address for the record.
Yeah, Jay Gossel, Long Beach. Regardless of bond that you guys passed tonight, obviously I don't waste my time with certain members of this council, but councilman, the chairman, councilmember, I really need to call you guys out on this, I'm very disappointed in your vote tonight, favor this bond. By, you know what I'm admitting, you didn't have sufficient opportunity to do your due diligence. You were given superficial documents in support of this thing late Friday before a holiday weekend. I do not see, as I mentioned in my earlier comments, where there was any urgency to pass this bond today. The best thing you could cite to, in terms of voting for this matter tonight, was Mr. Agostis saying that, um, council says that best practice is to do it sooner in the year rather than later. Meantime, the last bond for this type of expenditure was brought up months after the money was already paid out. So that argument doesn't hold for, quite frankly, I'm a little disappointed in you guys. Second thing is, I've been to a number of meetings now, and I regret Mr. Ramo's comments about the city manager having basically unfettered discretion to hire and fire senior management without any oversight by the council. To me, that's easily remedied. You guys need to pass some sort of resolution amongst yourselves that requires any senior hires, whether it be above a dollar threshold, or whether it be non-civil service hires, where those people they're hiring is brought before this council for, lack of a better term, a confirmation process, was something. Something so that somebody besides the city manager decides, or at least knows, who's getting hired, who's getting fired. It's unconscionable to me that the five of you could not know that the guy was hired at a hundred and thirty, or a hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year, whatever the amount was, and that you guys wouldn't know about it. If I was you guys, I'd be pissed, but that's just me. And lastly, on the subject of our city manager vacancy, where are we at with that? Anybody? Nobody? Okay, well?
Well, I'll give you an answer. I was informed, as I was walking into the building, that there's gonna be an announcement Friday, which means at least three people up here have made a decision. I certainly was a consultant, I don't know if it's true, I'm just telling you what I was told, or what I heard. I don't know if anybody else up here wants to comment on that.
Okay, so suffice, suffice to say it's a done deal, and my worst fears have realized, Mr. Agostis is about to come up, you come on city manager? All right, well, I'm gonna be anxious to see how that plays out. I'm like, Mr. Agostis, he threatens lawsuits and doesn't follow through, I promise you that I will file a lawsuit to prevent a non-compliant appointment from being made. Good luck.
Mr. John McNally?
Excuse me, ma'am, you have no idea the history that exists with this particular employee who is convicted of defrauding the city, thank you. Thank you for making my point, appreciate it.
Mr. McNally, please tell me about this.
Six thirteen, West Wells.
Thank you.
I'm just gonna echo what you heard a lot of here tonight, I don't think anybody here wants to be here right now. The tenor in this room is, I mean, it's vile, this, this stuff that we see on the national level, that has no business here. You know, the best days of Long Beach were the ones immediately after Sandy, we clearly, clearly lost those days. Mr. Torres, or Dr. Torres, always said decorum, please, can you continually echo that? It needs to start up here. It really does, you guys need to reject that. If we are hiring a new city manager, it's within the job qualifications that you guys posted online, for good customer service, that that person is able to be the face of the city, that, you know, is able to bring residents along with your collective agenda. That's... That's not happening here. I come up here, we may disagree on things, but I have no personal issues with any of you, and I try and keep my comments, generally speaking, productive. The vibe we've seen tonight, even if there is long past history, it's inexcusable. I know it's hot as hell in this room. I've been up since 5:00 a.m. this morning, 4:45, 5:00 a.m. this morning. I don't want to be here. Half the times I'm here, I'm paying a babysitter so I can be here. And it's not because I want to needle you guys. It's because I want what's best for my city, which I know is the same for all of you people. It's just, I mean, this is profoundly, profoundly depressing, and it's up to you folks. I think you can understand why residents are frustrated. I know you guys are frustrated, too, but a lot of the things that are frustrating us happen under this watch. We just want to see the challenges get addressed. We're making some progress in addressing some systemic issues, but I don't care how much somebody does come at you guys. You do not go after residents. That is not decorum, and that is not setting the bar. It's just, this is depressing as how this has been going.
Mr. David Gorbina. Ms. Rosemary Sheridan. Good evening. State your name and address for the record.
Rosemary Sheridan, 15 Tennessee Avenue. When I live in the West End, I'd have to let off a little bit of steam, even though there's a lot of steam in this room right now. A week ago, I was at an Army Corps of Engineers meeting, and it was discussed that they were going to start to work on the sand in the West End, okay? I had a meeting with somebody after the meeting was over, and they said they really didn't want to start in the West End, but they'd been, not forced, but they'd been told that's where they have to start. I'm appalled by that. There's as much business in the West End as there is in the rest of the, the rest of the town. In today's paper, there was a piece about, Mr. Tagney said something about the West End was the worst hit during the, during the storms, so that's why they are staying starting there. I don't think that's at all. I just think it's because it's the West End and they have to start someplace. And I know the job has to be done, but I wanted you to know, I don't feel happy about it, okay? Before you answer, I have another question. I live in the West End. I live on the South Side, in Ocean View. I'm gonna kill somebody one of these days, and I seriously mean that. People on bikes on Ocean View are a disgrace. I'm shaking in my boots every time I have to go north or south on Ocean View, but somebody is not looking, and I am trying to look, but it's a two-way street, but it's gonna be my fault if I hit somebody.
Thank you for your comments. So, we did meet with the Army Corps of Engineers. Both Councilmember Bendah and myself were also West Enders, and Councilwoman, I'm sorry, Legislative Denise Ford was also there, along with the rest of the entire council. And it was determined for various reasons. One of them is the piping plovers that live on the edge of the East Side, that they could move the quickest through the West End, because the dunes are already in place, and it is the narrowest beach in Long Beach. So supposedly, they're gonna move about 400 feet a day, so, and as they move, it's going to, they're gonna open up the beach behind them.
What month, they said, the meeting was gonna take?
Yeah, so 400 feet a day. So as they, as they do the area that's closed, and it'll be a much smaller area that'll be closed, like the groin project, you know, that they had a ton of big trucks. From my understanding, and if I'm wrong, it's two, it'll be two trucks, two...
Three bulldozers.
Three bulldozers. Everything's pumped in from the water. Everything's pumped. You've already seen, you could see the movies that they already have out there. There's gonna be a floating pipe, and it has to come in, it's coming in right about Grand.
I heard all that. I heard all that.
So the West End was chosen for a few different reasons, one of them being the piping plovers.
Well, I just wanted, I just really wanted to know how frustrated I was.
And then there were three West Enders at the meeting that all came to the same conclusion?
And the other thing is, do the people in the West End know that this is gonna happen?
I hope so.
I would argue probably not.
That's why I'm here.
So, I mean, they'll be close on...
Yeah, and one of the things I would just tell you to keep in mind is, heaven forbid, we get hit with another storm in September, October. It's gonna be the West End right now that's gonna be the most protected part of the city on the ocean side.
And what of the issue about Ocean View with the bikers? Mr. Tagney isn't here, so I can't...
Maybe we'll put you in touch with Commissioner Tagney, more traffic safety control issues, and he can discuss it.
I don't care what you do, but the people that are on bikes have to know when they see a stop sign. They have to either stop or slow down.
We would hope, the first one would be talking about traffic control.
Well, I'm standing here saying to yous now.
I use Ocean View all the time. I understand. Thank you. Mr. Roy Lester.
Now I know you shuffled it. I understand why I'm last or close to it.
You're not last.
Yeah, well, I was the first, one of the first to put it in. Anyway, Roy...
You were the first to put it in. You would be the last, because I just went straight down the pile.
Okay, so that, the idea then is, if you want to speak first, you should be one of the last ones to put it in. Is that how it works?
It doesn't work any particular way. The idea is that you fill out the topics so that we can keep the topics kind of together, but most folks, unfortunately, other than Ms. Blanchett, don't usually fill in the topic.
Because we don't know at that point. We don't know what's going to happen.
Okay.
Okay, anyway, a couple of questions. Just out of curiosity, did you pick a city manager? I mean, is what Mr. Bendah's saying true?
Please finish your three minutes.
No, no, I'm asking you a question. Please answer the question. You what?
I'm refusing to answer your question.
That's fine. That's good enough. Okay.
Will you answer it if I ask?
Probably not.
Since I'm a council member?
We've had this discussion for months, and I think you know who I've chosen months ago.
I know who you've chosen.
Okay, because of...
I know that, but that means if you're making an announcement Friday, that means two other people sitting up here...
I never said to you I was making, I never said to you I was making an announcement on Friday.
I don't believe there's been a decision on the city manager. We have an acting city manager who is not even here, because he wants to be. He wasn't asked to be. We told him he had a filled-up position, and doing, without a salary, at full-time, while being the police commissioner, full-time during the summer season. That's what we have.
And we need a...
That's not my question, Doc.
There's no decision. As far as I know, there's no decision, and I don't know what you're talking about for Friday.
You don't know what? Well, I heard it from here. I didn't bring it up. You don't know what Mr. Bendah's talking about.
Mr. Lester, there's been no decision on a full-time city manager.
Okay, all right, my questions.
It's Mr. Lester's time. You can talk after, but at least give him the respect. Let him finish.
The separation pay, does that count towards pension? Can you stop the conversation? Thank you.
That's still your time.
I asked a question. Does the separation pay count towards pension?
Do you mean are they including pension time in the separation pay?
No, no. Does, when you get paid, the separation pay, does that count towards your final three or five years?
I don't believe so. I think it's based on your average, your highest average for three years.
Well, it's five.
Salary.
Yes.
It's three.
Three, it depends on the...
It's not my average. It's the highest, your highest three, your minimum years.
Okay, so that separation pay does not count?
I'm sorry, can you...
That separation pay does not count towards any of those years?
I mean, I can't answer definitively, but my belief is down.
Okay, so, but yet, you're paying pension on that separation pay. Are you sure?
No, no, I don't know the details. That's a control...
That's what we were told tonight. You're paying pension, and we were talking $700,000 that's going towards pension and social security, but you're not sure about that?
And, you know, I would also answer that. I'm not, I'm not sure, Mr. Lester.
Okay, that's a fair, that's a fair answer. Okay, and I guess Mrs. Tagney's not here. We don't know what happened with the air conditioning. He said that we didn't have the money to repair it, and then somebody else said it's gonna be repaired on Thursday?
I think Mr. Miranda will speak to that.
Okay, all right, and finally, when you were saying that you had notice of everybody that's being hired, but whether a city council person wants to look at that, that's up to them, but you guys have basically, nobody looked and saw that Jim Caruba was hired for the full-time position?
I don't think anyone said no.
Anyone said, did you know it? Did, did, I'll ask you. You're the president. Did you know he was hired for the full-time position as Secretary to the Labor, to Labor Relations? You what?
I knew he did, yes.
So when he was hired, the day after he retired, he was hired in that position. You knew that?
I knew he was doing all the labor contracts, yes.
But did you know he was getting paid $130,000? Did you know he was hired at that position of $130,000 the day after he retired?
I don't remember.
You don't remember. Does anybody on the council remember? No?
I wasn't on the council, but I know the position after Jim Caruba was $55,000.
Yeah, okay, last thing, lifeguards.
That's a completely different job, John. Completely different.
Same title.
But it's a completely different job. That gentleman was hired to run the garage. Why that title was used, I don't know, but it was a completely different title. The mechanic garage, not DOT, mechanics, to operate and run the mechanics that we have that work on, I don't even know, hundreds of vehicles that we operate.
Okay, the lifeguards again. You, I understand last weekend, the lifeguards one night pulled out 10 people after hours, and I was asked about extending the hours, and you're going to have a drowning, you know that, but I don't understand why the hours are not being extended on hot days or 90-degree days, stuff like that.
We defer to the Chief of Lifeguards on that, and your time is up.
Thank you.
Mr. John Miranda, you have some comments, and can you just please touch on the air conditioning?
John Miranda, 1 West Chester Street. At the end of the year, when the bond wasn't passed, we did not have enough money to even pay the contractor who maintains the air conditioning system for the remainder of the year, so we still owed them money. We needed to wait until July 1st, and the new budget went into effect. I asked for more money in the building maintenance budget, of which another $25,000 was cut arbitrarily, okay? And we had to wait until July 1st to issue a purchase order. The contractor was in on Monday and Tuesday, and did all the testing that needs to be done on an annual basis, Legionella's disease and things like that, chemically cleaned out the whole system, and on Thursday morning, it will be activating the system. So as soon as we had money available in the budget and could issue the purchase order, we did.
Can I just ask a question? If the bond was for separation payments, what would that have to do with...
Well, because the bond was part of the overall budget, Mr. Bendah, okay? The separation pays were made all year. The bond was planned in that budget to cover those costs, so to make those separation pay costs, money had to come from somewhere.
No, no, I understand that, but that, that money was allocated to separation payments. We can reallocate money for separation payments to other things?
No, but we need to move money around to make payment of salaries and pay as many vendors as we could that are doing work, and a lot of vendors didn't get paid until July 7.
I understand, but then, so what we authorized tonight could be used to pay for Mobi mats?
No, when something is authorized for a specific, a specific resolution for a specific account, that's where the money goes.
I think what he's saying is, since we didn't authorize the bond, they used the other money to pay those payments that they had to pay.
So ironically, the bond would be saved.
We may transfer as amongst the, what they call the 400 accounts, our material supply accounts and things of that nature.
Mr. Miranda, are you saying that ironically, the bond would have been a safeguard? If the bond was passed, it would have been specifically for whatever those payments were, that would have been where the bond would have gone?
Correct. And we will continue that application. Anything else?
Okay, I wasn't gonna speak tonight, but something Missy Miller said about respect really triggered something in me tonight. I took this job over a year and a half ago. I interviewed with the existing council members then, there's Scott and Anthony, and at that time, it was Agin Gogan and Len Torres. And when I found, and I was offered a job in another village for a lot more money, and I decided to take the Long Beach job, because I listened to what all of you said in the interview, and how you all cared about, about the city. And I stay in constant contact with all the members of the board, of the council, and, you know, I do my job professionally, and over the last month, I look at people, and over the last year and a half, I've got to work with other exemps, who I find are as professional as I am, Bob Agostini, Mike Tagney, other people in the, in the, in the city. And over the last month, it's just been listening to the cat calls when people are talking, and to say that the council is disrespectful, when I listen to the way they disrespect Rob, or they disrespect the Commissioner, and I know that everyone's working hard up here, and those that weren't on, those that were on the board who reviewed my resume, know I have great credentials, and I don't think anybody would argue that. And Julie, John, you guys call me all the time with questions. I answer them. I give you the information you need. I really think that there's a small group in the public that really owes you all an apology, the council members, Rob, Mike, for some of the ways they come up here. If you have a real issue, come up about an issue and be respectful. I don't think everybody's been being respectful. We have a 16-year-old kid that comes up here, and he doesn't even live in Long Beach, and he's disrespectful, and people applaud and cheer, and I hear the cat calls from people, and I think it's, and over the last month, I've been completely disheartened working here. The first year and a half, I really enjoyed it. I feel we're all working to try to improve the life of people in Long Beach. I wake up every morning with that in mind, that I'm here to do a job for the people in Long Beach, and that includes all of you. You guys put in a lot of time for very little money and take a lot of abuse, and when people expect that you should know every single purchase order that goes through, you guys, all five of you would be working here full-time, looking over everything. That's why you hire professional staff. That's why the exems are here. That's why when we get a contract and we go through the bills, and my deputy commissioner audits it, they have to look in at all the inspection reports, and then he sends it to me, and I audit it, and I make sure it's correct, and I double-check, and then it gets sent to the controller, or now the assistant controller, and they check and send it on. If the five of you had to, and again, that's exactly what I'm talking about, okay? I, you know, people in the public here, they... The people, people in the public, people in the public call me all the time, and I respond to them. I go out to their houses and I meet with them, and I'm gonna get Jake yelling and screaming at me from the back, because I'm trying to make a point. Civility goes both ways, and a lot of these people like Jake haven't been civil to any of you. And I'm sorry I had to say this tonight, but I felt compelled. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner. Have a happy and safe Fourth of July, everyone.